So good evening, everyone. It's 6:06 PM and I'm calling this regular meeting of the Groton Board of Education to order for October 28th, 2024. And the first order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let's do it together.
And Susan, do we have any visitors or delegations?
No, not this time. We might next month.
Okay, so the next order of business is comments from citizens regarding agenda items and other subjects of concern that lie within the jurisdiction of the Board of Education. This is the portion of the agenda where the Board welcomes comments from citizens. Each presentation should be limited to five minutes or less. Citizens should, if possible, submit written comments. Presentation should be related to matters pertinent to Groton. Board members will only ask questions in order to clarify the speaker's presentation and cannot respond during the comments of citizens' portion of the board meeting. Citizens should make their presentations from the podium or online and state their names and addresses for the record. Do we have anyone who would like to address the board?
Portia Bordelon is in the room and raised her hand. I'm going to ask her to come up to a microphone that has a green light on so she can address the board.
Can you guys hear me like this? I don't know if they can online. Jay, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Perfect. Portia Bordelon, 24 Jefferson Drive, Groton, Connecticut. I'm here speaking as a citizen. For full disclosure, I'm also a town council member, former Fitch High School graduate, former parent of two kids that also went through Fitch High School as well and Groton School system. First, I just want to thank you guys for working hard on the non-lapsing fund. This is something that I brought to the council's attention probably about two years ago. And then it got referred, you know, no one wanted to do anything with it. It got referred to the former Board of Education before several of you taking your seats. And it kind of sat for a while and then it was told that it would, let's leave it and see if anyone wants to do anything with it when the new board comes. So I just wanted to thank you guys for looking at that. I am a firm believer in money and funds that are earmarked for Board of Education should be stay in the House of Education. And so I'm happy, even though I wasn't successful in the council to get that through with the new state laws and everything else. You guys definitely look like forerunners in taking that idea and moving it forward. So I just want to thank you guys on all that were involved and that supported that initiative. Means a lot to me. It was something I was really passionate about. I wish we could have did it two years ago, but hey, it's done now and that's what matters. So thank you for that. I know you guys are looking at the policy. We're looking, I just had some concerns in one of the policies where you use the word non-conforming when speaking about transgendered or people who identify with different sexual identities or backgrounds. I did some research with this and spoke to some of my friends who have children who identify as transgender or queer or in that population. And, you know, I just encourage this board, even though the language comes from the state, the state's not always perfect and they're sometimes behind the curve. And I believe that you don't have to verbatim take language. You can alter words to reflect your district if you choose to. And I would just look into that if possible. If it can't, it's good to be on the record stating there are a lot of people who don't like to be called non-conforming. What does that mean? It sounds offensive, right? You know, are they non-conforming? No, they feel that they are that way and they are this way. And when you say that they're non-conforming, but what is conforming? So a heterosexual person is conforming and a person is non-conforming if they choose to be queer or bisexual. So I just don't really like that word. And I did my own research on it and spoke to, you know, the younger group of people. And they agreed with me that that can be offensive to say that they're non-conforming to their gender. It reminds me of some old, for me, some old church things that were said back when I was a kid that they're non-conforming, which is really looked down upon now because we've changed in Roe. If it's not something that we can change, I just want to be on the record saying that it's not something. And I encourage you guys to reach out to your state reps and ask if there's ways if you can change that language. And it's, you know, sometimes don't rubber stamp what's just given to you from the state. You have a right as a Board of Education to say, hey, we're going to make these corrections, but we're concerned about this one word. Send that forward. Get a response from them. Okay? So I just encourage you guys to look into that. And again, that's just a personal thing for me, but if it doesn't get changed, I think it's great that we're still looking at this. So we make, we're making progress. As far as, welcome to the new financial director for the school district. I welcome you. I think it's great. I'm hoping that at some point this, this body is going to be looking at software. This is something else I've been talking about for probably about six and a half years since my RTM days, where I really wanted to see a more streamlined detailed budget where it actually explains more of what's going on. And I know that we've been in between having someone in this position. So maybe there's a hole to try to wait to see until we get somebody in there. But I hope that that's the top of your list because what we're using is so outdated and we really need to make sure the Board of Edge, you know, budget item and software is in the 21st century. So I hope that's moving along. I know at one point the town did offer the Board of Edge many years ago to go on. And I believe there was a decline from the Board of Edge, probably before most of you were on here. But definitely, I don't know if that's still on the table or not, but to hope that's being looked at as well. Again, I'm not sure. It was great. Thank you to Dr. Ackerman for the Dr. Martin Luther King and all your hard work you do there. As a Fitch graduate myself, I was never a recipient, but it's something I'm extremely passionate about. As I had many of my friends that were recipients over the years and I have over the 20 something years have gone even before I was on the council when I could. In college, I couldn't afford to go, so I didn't get to go as much. But, um, so thank you for all your hard work. And the messages there were very strong. And one of the things that I've been speaking about coming up here is ESL, English as a Second Language tutors. And if you heard one of the women speak there so eloquently about walking into that room and not knowing anybody and not being able to communicate in her language and the support that she needs. And looking, looking at her becoming a Martin Luther King Junior Scholarship recipient later with all those supports needed. I just encourage this board to make sure we are properly funding our English as a second language. And I think it's very important that children have that access. When I first started getting involved in politics, there was one moving between the middle school and the high school. And when I spoke to families, they were saying their, their students in their language were above grade level at college level even, you know. But when they came here, they were put into lower level classes because they didn't have the supports to help them. And that shouldn't be the case here in Groton and I sure hope it won't be. And in fact, some of these students don't have the supports in all of their classes. And that's a concern because you can't cohort a bunch of kids in one area with an ESL teacher. They all have to be in their individual programs. So I encourage this Board of Edge to really look at, are we properly funding our English as a second language classes in our district from elementary to middle to high school? Every student should have at least 50% or more of their classes where someone is helping them with that. And I don't believe that's happening currently. And that's just something that we should be making sure we're looking at funding. And it really hit me to hear that at the Martin Luther King Junior Scholarship Dinner that, you know, hearing that and then making sure we're, we can do better in Groton. And it's just a funding issue perhaps. And my other thing, of course, that I'm very passionate about, after, you know, having a son graduate recently, really realizing that a part-time career counselor, in my opinion, for a population that we serve at Fitch is not enough. It is not enough. I'll say it again. I look at other districts around where they have full-time career counselors on top of their school counselors and their populations are even smaller, like Stonington has a full-time career counselor, counselor just designated to doing career enrichment. Why? I look at equality and access to education and helping children achieve, like the MLK Dinner, achieve that chance of being the first family member to go to college and graduate. Here in Groton, a lot of parents have to pay to find like a hedge hunter or, you know, like a person to help them do all the legwork for that. And a lot of people cannot afford that. Luckily, I had my husband and myself and a few friends that have helped us. Other families I spoke to, they hired someone and paid a weekly salary for help to be able to do that. In the town of Groton, that's not fair because not everyone can afford to do that. And we need to make sure that we have a full-time career counselor that's split up by alphabet. So every student has fair and equitable access. I say this not because of the part-time career council we have is, is not certified. She is actually brilliant. And I have a lot of respect for her, Mrs. Alenact. She's wonderful, but she's only one and she's part-time. So I don't know if it's going to be that we hire another part-time person or Mrs. Alenact rises to a full-time position. But we in Groton, if we truly have these IB and these AP classes, we should be funding a career counselor, which is also one of the areas that we were looked at upon when we were looked at for the Alliance District of kids going off to college. So we should be looking at funding that support system. It's, it's, it's writing those essays, it's contacts, it's a full, I mean, the amount of stuff that was not even known, the things that we found on our own that even our school didn't even know about in the career council. You know, we learned so much and I just hope that we can find a way in Groton to make that happen. And my last thing, honors level classes. I won't stop until I see a change because again, I'm doing more research and I'm going to present something to you guys in writing. I looked at NFA, I looked at East Lime, I looked at other schools that are higher, you know, higher or equal in performing and they are keeping their honors level classes. Fine. Maybe I'm not the biggest cheerleader of the IB program because I just, in my opinion, I think AP can get the job done. But I do believe honors level for all of the programs is a segue and a branch, especially for children that have English as a second language or children who have IEPs or kids who may not be AP, IB across the board in every subject might need one or two honors to be sprinkled in there, but don't want to go down to college prep because the new, new college prep is the new general, in my opinion, because we took away general. And now the lowest level class we have is college prep. So there's nowhere else to go. And a lot of the students I talked to don't feel like that class is rigorous enough because it's a mixed bag of a lot of different demographics and levels. And so for them, honors feels like, kind of like the college prep level. So I just encourage that you guys look at that. Don't look at it as a defeat. Look at it as an enhancement of the IB and the AP program for students who want to jump. For example, as I said at many other meetings, if you're a kid that comes in and you're freshman year, you're in college prep and then you move to honors sophomore year and then you're just not feeling like you can go AB or IP. There's nowhere else for you to go. You either go down to college prep. You can't go up if you don't feel like you're ready. There's no, there's no middle ground. And I don't know where the curriculum writing has come from. Thank you. In closing, I'm not sure where the curriculum writing is coming on why that was caught. I know there's new people on here, but I encourage you guys to really look at the honors level programs as a important piece of our curriculum enhancement. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Is there anyone else who would like to address the board? Do we see anyone online?
I don't see anybody with the hand raised.
Are the attendees able to raise their hands?
Our student representatives were trying to come in.
Okay. Yeah, they'll be, they'll be next up. So first of all, are there any responses to comments from citizens?
I have a clarifying question.
Matt is asking a question.
Okay.
Jay.
Yes, go ahead.
Jen as well. With regard to Ms. Bordelon's comment about the way we are using the term non-conforming gender identity. Is that imposed upon us by statute that we need to use this term?
I think that's what came in the, either the legislation or the K. I know I have Denise Doolittle who will be joining us later on when we're talking about. And we can ask, we can certainly look into it.
Okay, well, we'll talk about that later.
I've always thought the same thing, kind of didn't register with me as a positive like.
We'll talk about that later. Thank you.
Jen, did you have something?
I did, Jay. So Portia, thank you for bringing up like the four or five items that you brought up. I agree with you on that terminology, non-conforming. Not sure if anyone that you spoke to had like a better word than how they view themselves. So if they do, you know, these fields to share that with us so that you can, if we're able like to consider that, that was my word. In terms of the IT for the budget, there's an ad hoc committee, as you know, that's in place. And we just didn't have time to look at the IT and then we wanted to wait until the new business manager was in place. Probably in agreement with English and the second language too, and just looking at that in the support for that. So, thank you.
Okay, any other responses to come from citizens?
Just a quick clarifying question, I guess, for parliamentary wise. Are the attendees able to raise their hands as attendees, just to be sure? We have six attendees online. Are they able to?
Yes.
Are you showing us that you can raise your hand?
Yes, I'm able to. Yep.
And are our students, have you let our students in, Mark?
Apparently it wasn't Catherine McCann, it was Amy.
Right. And Denise Doolittle is a, is on as a panelist, so that doesn't answer my question. And I was just, I'm not asking anyone for to comment. I just was curious to know if attendee, if they did, if they have the capability to raise their hands technology-wise.
Well, I know when I was, before I was promoted to panelist, it was giving me the option under reactions on my phone to raise my hand. But I don't know if everybody's version of the software works the same way.
It should. All right. Okay, good to know. And I'll just say that I do thank Counselor Bordelon for her comments tonight. And I share the concerns about the non-conforming terminology. In fact, we did mention, we did discuss it briefly during the policy committee meeting on that language. And there, there is a marker on it, so to speak, as far as something we were going to look into. So I look forward to looking into that further.
Right. Thank you very much. And thank you, Counselor Bordelon. I know you're always a supporter of education. We appreciate that. Do we have the student representatives here?
We thought we did, but I don't see them on there. Mark, can you verify that?
Yeah, I don't see them either.
Okay. Well, I know they're very busy with all other activities and so we will catch up with them at the next meeting. All right. So next we will go to the superintendent and administration reports.
Okay, so I'm going to ask Lauren Cassini to join us. We've been going through a lot of data, as you all know. And attendance is really, enrollment, I'm sorry, is really important to understand our enrollment, especially because of the military and also with, we've seen even more, I think, with households, we've been moving more readily. I think we're finding affordable homes, to tell you the truth. So it does impact our, our schools and our students, mostly impacts our students. So Lauren's going to share with us, what I'm going to ask you to do is if she can go through the presentation. And then if you have a question, jot it down, just because she typically will answer the questions throughout the presentation. So this way you'll be able to get things answered. And if not, you'll, you know, have a question to ask at the end. So. Thank you, Lauren.
I think, good evening, everyone. And I apologize. I know I sent you a second version with the numbered slides after the fact, so I do apologize about that. And I hope everyone was able to grab them, give me their own. I don't know if you were sent, were you sent the originals so they don't have them online? I did send them out after the fact and I apologize for that. I don't know what I was thinking.
So is this one numbered?
This slot, this one is numbered, yes. Yep. So enrollment, it is involved, I guess would be the, it's constant. It's, it's data that is constant. It's just fluid. There is no set, we, we can grab snapshots, you know, at certain points in time, but it's constantly changing. By the minute of every day, it's going up or down or changing in some fashion. So what you're looking at, so we try to find like consistent points, right? So we have like something to compare to apples to apples. And so we typically will use one of our snapshot dates. So it's either usually October 1st and then we have another what we call snapshot date in June where we take that information. We clean it as best we can. We rid ourselves of as, of the errors that may be, you know, in, in the data, we clean those, they register with us. And then we send this off to the state and this is part of what the state uses for those websites that you have available to you at site public, at site secure. It's pretty much how everything with the state is captured. It's through our portal in this process. And so what you have here are basic numbers from October, the enrollment from October 1 of last year to October 1 of this year. And then the changes, whether they were a positive or negative change. Keep in mind that when you're looking at these numbers, this isn't actual students, the same 369 students compared to the three, same 369 students the next year plus an additional six. It's just, again, it's a snapshot, if that makes sense. Okay? So, and you'll see that their, the retention rate looks a little different. But what you're looking at here is again, just an enrollment number. That's, that's all it is for each of these schools. Our hardest hit this year was Thames River. I was actually quite surprised to, when I did the math and looked and was able to tease that out a little bit because Thames River really is one of, one of the largest schools that we have and one of the most fluid, including in our lottery, like people wanting to go to Thames River because of the magnet theme and because of, you know, it's a newer school and it has a lot of extra programs to it. So the fact that we were down 30 kids from that point, the same point last year was a bit of a surprise to me, to be quite honest with you. And so I'm trying to think about the whys behind that and I haven't come up with a good reason.
Jamie did say that she did get after this, the next month, 20 or 30 more kids who've come. And she really believes that it was related to the submarine base. And then, you know, we were told that we wouldn't get this next sub till October and she felt like that was part of that transition. And it just didn't hit us like it typically hits in the summertime.
Yeah.
That movement. I don't know if it hit Charles Barnum in the same way. But Jamie did say to me that the number has changed very much since that time.
Yeah, I think in the last two days, I want to say we registered seven kids just for Thames River as an example. It really is that fluid, as we said. So, um, so yes, that is a possibility. And I know there are still conversations about a, not a full boat coming in, but like a well, micropopulation, I guess. I'm not sure how else to describe it. So we do have an influx coming probably around January.
Another one, yep.
I believe that was the last that I had heard from Miranda, our military liaison. In terms of our secondary schools, they've taken some, some hits as well. Fitch High School is down 76 kids from the same point last year. Groton Middle School is down 13 students, which isn't, I mean, again, when you think about that, that ebb and flow that happens on a daily basis, the 13 student difference isn't really significant. Fitch High School, that's a pretty significant decrease from this time last year. I do want to point out that when we look at other placements, I want you to understand that those are within our district. So as an example, some of those students belong to our Transition Academy, which is up here at Central Office. We have another group of students that is part of our academy up here, students who may have been expelled or need to be out of the building for one reason or another. It includes them, our new beginnings program at the high school. So those are the types of, of examples of students that belong to those other placements. And so when we look at our total district, in-district students, we had 4,077 last year. We, on October 1 of this year, 3,987. And I think I made a note that that has increased. Even within 10 days of that, it was, I want to say 25 students additional from that number.
So that's another good thing, I think, before budget season is to do another enrollment check, just to see where we're at. Especially anywhere there's another group coming in, just to see what the real actual number is at that time.
Right. And we do monitor this on a weekly basis. Our registration really looks closely at these numbers on a weekly basis and reports out to us. So, so yes, that is something that will continue. So when we talk about our out-of-district students, I just wanted you to understand who we are talking about. Those are the students that have been placed outside of the district, whether it be for special education purposes. Those are our inter-district magnets. So as an example, any of the learned schools would be part of that number as well. Grasso, El Grasso Tech would be part of that number. The only one that is not associated with that number would be our sacred, our students going to Sacred Heart. Okay? And so overall, as a district, in district and out of district, we have about a 74-person decline, student decline in our enrollment. So for grade level, this is what our counts look like as of October 1st. By grade level. I did not include kindergarten because I actually wanted, and you may have, when you looked at it, noticed that, that I wanted to put them at the end because of the whole movement with transitional K this year. I wanted you to be able to have a better picture of what that looks like and how it's made up. So our numbers this year, looking at them relative to last year per grade level, some of the interesting shifts were in third grade where we had a really a large bump. We had a 29-student bump from last year. 44 at grade five over last year's number at grade five. And our greatest loss was at grade 10 last year compared to this year, if that makes sense. So again, our number, enrollment numbers as we get into the high school are a little bit lower.
I think they do have a lot of choice in this area between the intra-district magnets in New London. Marine Science really hosts a lot of our students. It's a nice choice. It's a smaller school. We've always been believers in both intra and inter-district magnets. So they still are our students. They count for us with Impact Aid and we do pay their tuition or part of their tuition. The state pays the other half. So they still are kind of belonging to us, even though there's 400 and close to 500 students that are in that. So you do see that dip continuously because of all the other choices that students have in this neck of the woods.
Our marine science is, as of, I believe it was today when I looked, marine science, we have about 90 students that currently attend Marines, Marine Science. Now, I'd say it was another, I don't want to give you a number, but Grasso was right around that same ballpark figure. But I don't know off the top of my head, so I don't want to say. Compared to last year, if you're looking cohort to cohorts, what I was telling you were grade by grade. But if you were looking at that grade level cohort, so as an example, if we were looking at last year's second grade group, that would be this year's third grade group. The largest increase was our third grade to fourth grade this year, which had a 13 person bump in it. And again, our, our largest decrease was in ninth to 10th grade. So we lost 45 students between grade nine and grade, grade nine last year to grade 10 this year. So again, that's another interesting thing. It's just things we're constantly looking at to, to ask ourselves the why, right? So that we can plan for that and attack it from, from different angles, you know. Enrollment by race and ethnicity. So 45, 46% of our population is made up of white students with the second largest being our Hispanic Latina population at 27%, just on, just shy of 27%. We do have a small native Hawaiian population and a smaller, or no, roughly about the same American Indian population. And again, this is really, it's just to give you a, a nice visual of our district and who we are, right? And what our makeup is. And so when we look at our languages, our primary language, we have 39 different languages spoken within, spoken within the district, which is incredible. I mean, that's just when you think about that, all the languages you can learn from your peers, right? And that other children are exposed to. The remaining top five are on the board. English is the number one primary language. Don't confuse that with the only language spoke. It's just what they have identified as the primary language in their home. Spanish is our second population with Mandarin, Urdu and Filipino following behind. But you can even see even within the, the top five, there's a vast difference between the top two and the, and the next three. And so our high needs subgroup, and just as a quick reminder, when we talk about high needs, we're talking about students that have limited English proficiency. And that has been pretty consistent. And that has been pretty consistent um over the, you know, between last year and this year. And even as I went further back, it has been relatively stable um at four percent. Same thing with special education, that remains um about the same. And the thing that was surprising to me at least was the economically disadvantaged, which is your students that qualify for free and reduced lunch. Um, last year, our percentage was at fifty four percent qualifying, where based on our October one snapshot this year, it was forty three percent.
And I think that's something we need to look at because now that we're a CEP district, I don't know that people are filling out their forms. And so it could be the collection of data. I want to talk to Ernie about making sure that we continue to collect that data. You know, it could even bring us the fact that we could end up being eligible as a whole district. And um, so that's something we should look at.
Susan. Uh, could we look and see if that decrease in economically disadvantaged might be an artifact of some of the lower income families being evicted?
That's a really great point.
That's a point, but they, when they're homeless, they still, they've been affected and they're homeless. And even if they're at a hotel, they are still ours.
Well, if they've moved to another community, they, they've moved to Jewett City, for example, they're not ours anymore.
Yeah, it's something I wanted to dig into deeper. I agree. Yeah, yeah, it would be helpful to know.
That, that is a great point.
And Dean has a question on this one.
Yeah, thanks. Uh, I know, I should go through Jay, because he's the, the chair, but that's okay. It occurred to me, when you're calculating the percentages of economically disadvantaged, you mentioned the forms. I know that there are families that do not bother to submit the forms because they simply aren't anywhere near qualifying for free or reduced lunch. So the last thing on their list is to fill out a form that says, I, I make way too much money and so. So when you cook, when you look at percentages, if you say, okay, it's fifty four percent, are you looking, are you saying that of the pile of forms? Or the pile of respondents, fifty four percent meet the criteria? Or are you, are you making an assumption about who has not submitted anything? I wager it's the former. That if you, that if you've got a thousand forms, fifty four percent of the forms are economically disadvantaged. You could have gotten twelve hundred forms, but two hundred decided not to return them, maybe because they are in fact economically disadvantaged before one reason or another have not filled out the form, or frankly, I've seen my wife struggle with this. She goes, I am not filling this form. I am not providing this data. We will not qualify. I'm not going to bother. Doesn't make any difference either way. So the percentages are a percentage, I'm guessing of the forms you receive.
The forms that we receive or we get it through SNAP benefits, and I think I've explained this, which is not fair to the military community because SNAP benefits are automatic with Husky Insurance. But in the world of a, a submariner or someone who's, you know, serving our country, they get TRICARE. And TRICARE doesn't qualify them for SNAP benefits. So between SNAP benefits, that would be an automatic puts you into that category to receive what you need. Um, or to fill out the form and you, you qualify. Those are two different ways that, you know, we can collect that data.
So, uh, Dean, I, I, I know what you're asking. You're asking what hundred percent is.
How accurate is?
If this is done like the state is, then a hundred percent is all the students in the district, not, not the, not all the people that did the form.
Yeah, so assume, assume you have a student body of forty five hundred and you get forty, four thousand respondents. You're missing, I'm, I'm picking up numbers. You're missing five hundred responses. Is the, would the fifty four percent of the forty three percent be the fifty four, forty three percent of the four thousand?
The total population.
Total, the whole population. So you make an assumption about the missing. You're assuming that the missing forms are not because, for one reason or another. Okay, just.
Because we, there's, because they don't exist, right? We haven't gotten them, they haven't been returned, right?
Right, but soon you know the total population, you also know the forms returned and the numbers, numbers don't match. I'm just trying to figure out what the error rate is. So when faced with fifty four percent, that is.
Well, this is something.
The reality.
Right, and then.
Been really kind of escalating up, you know, at one point we were fifty, fifty one, then we're fifty four, and then all of a sudden it's forty three. So there's definitely something going on.
Right, and, and that error in, in assessment could go either way. I mean, the unknowns are the unknowns.
Yeah.
You know, there, there could also be people who are disadvantaged, who maybe, you know, didn't fill out the form for other reasons. Because, you know, life is chaotic.
Yeah.
Yeah, and things get lost.
Right.
Especially when you, you know, if you're, if you're stressed economically.
Right, we don't know.
At it going, I'm not even really.
But I can, I can imagine a lot of people who, who just know damn well, they don't qualify, they will not fill out the form, they're not going to bother. So between two groups, you know, on either end, which is, is it like two to one, one to? Well, you know, what's the, you know, because we base a lot of decisions on these numbers. So to say, oh, look at our number, we brought from fifty four to forty three. Have we in fact been measuring from one year to the next the same way?
Yes.
Okay, uh, and so, so is that a real eleven percent drop, for example?
Well, but that's where we need to call on um Ernie and begin having conversations to make sure, yeah, like what? Cause I know he had, he really did a great job and I have not spoken into him too much this year, but last year, I know there was a huge push. Like he goes out and works with Miranda, our military liaison. He, he targets specific areas to try to get those um, those forms completed.
Support people around our community. They really reach out to support people.
But the specifics I don't want to respond to because I don't know all of his specifics. Yeah.
And so, so we do make efforts. So based on those efforts, we have an idea historically, what percentage you can always count on. There always being a certain percentage on average that are just, they're not going to come in, you know? Pretty well, you're looking at the demographic you may be looking at, but they're just not turning in their forms. You want to help, they're not turning in their forms, something like that, that we know, you know? It's like percentage of people who don't pay their property taxes. It's like a known, you know, an estimated percentage of people that just aren't going to pay this year.
And just to be clear, you're, you're asking for us to maybe think about ways to try to capture and estimate, better estimate that number. You're not looking for answers tonight.
Fifty four, forty three. Below, maybe, maybe, maybe the difference isn't significant at all.
It just makes you wonder though.
Anyway, sorry for thinking of all the time.
But to be, but to be fair and clear though, forty three percent, um, you know, who have turned them in, that's still a pretty significant number in comparison to other districts. So I think. That I don't know, that is an Ernie thing. He might be able to answer that um better than I would. I just get the information based on who qualifies. Um, but I don't know the specifics of how many actual forms have been turned in. Um, but I can reach out.
Number that the state.
Yeah.
Use.
Based, based on the snapshot, yes, this is the number that the state will be using.
As October first.
Mm-hmm, yeah. And so we'll have another snapshot in June, um, and they'll look to that as well. But at this point, this is the number.
Can I ask one question on that before we go? Um, so how, what percentage, how many respondents did you get? So out of forty four hundred kids, what percentage of people actually filled it out, do we know?
Um, I could, I can look, I don't want to look at that right now, that is. I don't want to share student information.
Yeah, yeah.
Green is sharing, so I don't want to pull it up right now, but I can find that out. That's.
All right.
Yeah. Wait, can you tell me again what specifically you, you're looking for, the count?
Yeah, just the percentage of, of respondents.
Oh, but something else too, I'm sorry.
Well, this kind of gets to what Dean was talking, this just kind of piggybacks on that, you know, are, are eighty percent of the families filling it out or?
Yep.
Or thirty percent?
Yeah.
Well, I guess it's at least forty three, but.
Um, one last thing, I am, I'm going to speculate that there's some overlap. In other words, if you wanted to say high needs group, you don't go four plus twenty plus forty three.
No.
You must know what the overlap is, you don't have to tell us, yeah. So in other words, if you wanted to say, okay, what percentage of the students are actual high needs? There's a secret formula that, or you, you have the numbers to be able to, but you should have the numbers to be able to actually give us the. It's like you can't add your triglycerides, LDL and HDL together and get your cholesterol number. It doesn't work that way. So what, you know, what's the overlap?
Between students who are.
Yeah, so, so four, so four percent is limited English proficiency, some of them might be in the economic advantage. Some of them might be in special education or, you know, some combination.
And all three, yes, absolutely.
Yeah.
I don't have that, again, I don't, I have that in, in a spreadsheet, but I don't have that readily available, like printed out for you. And I don't want to pull it up right this second.
Sounds like a scenario for a Venn diagram.
Oh, boy.
Three circles.
I can, if you'd like.
It's a thought.
Okay. Yep, but yes, to your point, they can be in one, two, or all three categories.
Did that make our presentation to council stronger to have a Venn diagram?
Well, I think we should look at it.
I think it would just be informative to us as a body, like, just to understand like how much overlap there is in between those three categories.
Good idea.
I just have a quick procedure question. Are we asking questions on each slide as we go? Or did you want us to wait until the end? Cause I've been writing them down.
Presentation, so thank you. You followed the directions.
I have.
Asking questions.
I have several too, but.
Okay, I'll, I'll get there.
So our special education population by school, so this is a breakdown by school. Again, this is specific to October one, these numbers are fluid. Um, our highest uh, percentage of, of special ed students fall into our Mystic River and Thames River that house um some of our larger specialized programs for those students. Um.
And preschool special ed.
Including, yes, including preschool special ed as well. So that's why those numbers um, look as high as they are. Uh, Mystic River in particular, so when you're looking at counts, right? Uh, Mystic River's special education population does exceed even that of Thames River. Um, we do want to look at how many classes are at Mystic River um for those specialized programs and see the number of students in each one of those classes in comparison. Um, and then I want to look at, if I were to remove those specialized classes, how many students have an IEP that are not part of those programs, just, just for curiosity sake, it's just something that you know, when you were thinking about schools and needs and resources, right? You try to look at it from every angle. So I'm, I'm interested in that with, with Mystic River and Thames River in particular. Um, limited English proficiency, again, we, we are not a district that is overpopulated um with and has a, a ton of language um needs. Um, but that is steadily growing as well. And again, Mystic River does seem to house the most amount of students that are limited English proficient. Here is our um economically disadvantaged by school. No, NEA um is our lowest and the rest are pretty, pretty much NEA and Thames River. All the rest are just about at that fifty percent mark or are quickly approaching it. Military population, this one's astounding to me. But nothing that we didn't know, our most heavily populated um school for military families is CB. Given the location in the, the uh zone attendance area. Thames River as well has a significant military population. What's interesting about C um Charles Barnum, so when you're thinking about military families and movement. Um, Charles Barnum's retention rate, meaning students who are there year over year, is eighty eight percent. So on any given year, they are turning over about twelve percent of their population, which is pretty, pretty significant when you think about it. Um, you know, introducing new families in and losing, losing kiddos that you've made some ground with, so that's I thought that was an interesting point. Thames River, you know, with the second highest military population, even over the high school and um middle school, their retention rate is ninety percent. So they have a ten percent turnover um each year as well.
That's pretty close.
Which is pretty significant. Everyone else is up at like ninety five to ninety nine percent retention rate. Um, so, so those are the two schools that really ebb and flow the most. Which going back to your initial point with Thames River and that thirty, thirty student drop, right? From that October one to October one, if we were to take that same snapshot, maybe even now, that might look very different. Here's the kind of revisiting the economically disadvantaged. Um, you can see it's up and down, but I, this, this year was a pretty good decrease in comparison. It's the lowest it's been since pre-COVID. Um, so it's, it's worth monitoring and really, I think, to your point as well. It's, it's really about making sure that outreach is continually happening and we're getting to save those forms back as we can. And taking the, the stigma off of it and supporting families in how to fill them out, which I know Ernie has done a great job, as I had mentioned before, so just continuing that work. Okay, now this is a tricky slide. I don't want, I, I don't want to overwhelm you and I don't want to have you go down too many rabbit holes because again, the fluidity is something to be noted. When we talk about students delivered to the CIS, what we're talking about, and Matthew, thank you very much, as he pointed it out to me over the weekend. When we're talking about the CIS, what we're talking about is the student information system. So where we house all our student information. So when we say that students have been delivered, that means they're new to us. They're either new or returning to us during that school year. So the twenty three, twenty four school year, when I did this, the um, the calculation, uh, which I'm trying, I did it from June thirtieth to July first to June thirtieth. One thousand seven, uh, seventy five students were delivered to the CIS, meaning there were new one thousand seventy five new students that came into or returned to Groton during that school year. This year, to date, from July one until that, until October first, six hundred and fifty six students were delivered to the CIS, meaning six hundred and fifty six new students to grind.
I know, over the summer and beginning of the year.
Yeah, and this has not stopped, like this, not, that number will continue to climb. We're pretty on par with last year. I think we were just shy of uh seven hundred around the same time last year, so we're pretty, pretty on par. Um, last year, we had seven hundred and one students transfer out of, of Groton Public Schools during the, again, during that whole year, July one to June thirtieth um timeframe. And so far for this school year, so since July one, we've lost three hundred and twenty nine students. They've transferred out. The majority of those were uh transfers of moves out of state um or out of Groton. Um, not necessarily um magnet students. This, this isn't including kiddos who go to um like Grasso or, you know, one of the district, uh, inter-district magnet schools.
Terrifying question.
Yes.
Um, how does this, how does the impact of graduating senior class and a new kindergarten or pre-K or T K influence these numbers?
Um, graduating does not influence it. So those exits out do not include graduating students, okay? However, and I rationalize it in my head. Um, I did include kindergarten in these numbers as well as pre-K and um preschool because they were new to our, new to our community, new to our school system. Um, whereas as graduating, they've now gone on, right? So I'm constantly looking at like what's coming in, right? And we want to account for our kindergartners and preschoolers. Um. Because it's for planning purposes, if that makes sense. And maybe it wasn't the right line of thinking, but that was my line of thinking in, in creating them, right? Cause if we're talking about enrollment and, and making plans and thinking about using this information, figure out resources moving forward, we need to know who's coming in. Whereas the students that graduated are in a different bucket, right, wrong or indifferent.
Thank you.
Um, of the new students this year that have been delivered, a hundred and eighty of those are kindergartners. Um, and a hundred and forty five are. Um, and this is, oh, did I, I think I gave you last year's numbers, I apologize. No, I didn't. Again, those were new students delivered to the system. So a hundred and eighty kindergartners, meaning they weren't with us for preschool or pre-K. If that makes sense. If that makes sense. So this year we have two hundred and seventy-two kindergartners and sixty-seven students that at this point last year would have been kindergartners, but with new legislation are now our, our transition programs, our elementary schools and our four elementary schools. So about twenty percent of the population. And preschool versus pre-K. We have a hundred and sixty-nine students currently in pre-K this year. And the difference between them, so pre-K, pre-kindergarten is really preparing students for transitional kindergarten and kindergarten, whereas our preschool program is more of an integrated program. And so it's where students with and without IEPs are, are placed into this class. And students that may not have an IEP can be used as like a peer role model to support the development of students who may be a little bit behind. So that's really the difference. Preschool is more, they begin at our age three, whereas our pre-K is our age four students. And this is just a quick, like, how does this happen? Like, what's involved? And it is very complex. And that's really the word I was looking for earlier and just could not retrieve it. It requires ongoing tracking. Like I said, it is fluid. It changes by the minute of every day, really. Intra-district, meaning within our district, there's a lot of movement and inter-district. Kids going in and out of our district to some of the magnet schools. The systems typically overlap for a large, a large portion of the year. Our registration is working from two separate systems. They're working from the current system and they're planning and preparing for our new school year. So come January, that she'll be juggling those two systems as well. In addition to that, there are a lot of factors that go into placing students. We have our magnet seats. We need to consider. We have our highly mobile students that we need to consider. We have buildings that hit capacity just because of the number of the volume of students in one particular area. And so they sometimes need to be placed elsewhere in other buildings. So, and then looking at, well, what about siblings and bus runs and trying to make all those pieces work to, to make it as efficient and effective as possible. And we do this in order to identify needs, right? Like, that's the whole purpose of constantly looking at enrollment and how it's changing and all these facets of it. You know, so that we can begin to think about what kind of resources. We really do need to be securing and, and possibly shifting. And so that is, I am open for questions.
Jay, I'm gonna do your job here and I see the hand, so he just raised his.
Yeah, I'm sorry. It is a little bit awkward since I'm not able to see, but but you, you folks know the, the drill. Thank you. All right, um, just gonna, gonna work backwards, I think, to the packet. Uh, so as far as the enrollment numbers, uh, you said the student Xs did not include accounting for graduation. But the entries did account for pre-K, K, TK
Yes.
And preschool.
Yes.
So, um, I guess, so I, I'd be curious to see just sort of overall, just a more articulated breakdown of these numbers, just to be, to get, you know, a little more insight. I, I don't, I don't think, I think it would be fair to have graduations in an exit if they're identified as graduations. But again, just to kind of like know, you know, how many people graduated from here overall. I mean, we know about the class, but I mean, and you said this includes intra-district? Uh, like the the tech schools and
Inter-district, yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
So anyone that was delivered to our, our system knew, right? So if they've been, so as an example, if they've been at, say, Grosso Tech and they're going to Grosso Tech this year, they're not included in these numbers.
Okay.
They're already accounted for. These are new students to our system.
But if someone from another town attended Grosso Tech.
And moved into our, our town? Yes.
Okay, but if not, if they did not move into the town, then they are not in the books here.
No, 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 no.
If they're attending from another town.
No.
Okay. Yeah, so just looking at the numbers, so the students delivered to SIS is six hundred and fifty-six. And adding up all the numbers in the next two graphs, I came up with five hundred and ninety-five. Is that?
Well, don't forget that that includes inter-district. So wait, tell me which graphs you're looking at.
The preschool, pre-K, kindergarten, and transitional?
Yep.
So those four numbers?
But there's more than that. So that includes, don't forget, we also have students that come in, in fourth grade, fifth grade, seventh grade, you know, it's
Right.
all encompassing number.
Yeah, yeah. So I guess that's where I'd be interested to see like, okay, so what's the other categories? You know, where do they?
Better break that, that
Yeah.
hundred and fifty-six down.
Right, because five hundred and ninety-five is accounted for in these graphs. So that leaves about sixty-one that, you know, just kind of curious. It's more of a
So those would, those would most likely be inter-district
Yeah.
students. So even if let's say they're new to Groton, but they want to attend, you know, I keep saying Grosso because it's down the road, but let's say Marine Science or the Friendship School.
Okay.
Which is a younger grade. If they've just moved into Groton and they're registering, they have to register with us because we fund them. So we need to have their information so that we can properly pay for, yep, so we have to have proof of residency. So they're required to register with us. So they may never come to a Groton Public School, but they're still part of our makeup because we're still paying.
Right, right.
Including busing. Does that make sense?
Yep.
So you just want to see who are those other kiddos?
Yeah, so I mean, not who personally, of course, just
Oh, no, I know what you're saying. Yep.
Uh, where are they going, I guess, and, yeah. And, see.
And if you're asking where they're going, our, our biggest our biggest populations that go elsewhere would be Grosso, Marine Science, Ledgerd High School, and then the Friendship School. But the Friendship School is a pre-K program. They don't even house kindergarten, so.
Understood.
You know, but we do have a lot of students that go there as well.
And that kind of ties into the other question, I guess, in some way. Skipping back to all the enrollment, the tables on pages one and two. With all the out-of-district departures and just in general, I guess, you know, uh, do we do any sort of exit survey? As far as like, why people may choose to leave the district or, you know, is it all just compulsory, like say, military transfer or are there, you know, if there is a choice to leave, do we know, do we have a, a good understanding as to why?
No.
I mean.
No, we don't. I mean, we do know if they're typically so around March will do what's called an intent to return for, meaning are you planning to come back next year? And so that's a good opportunity. Most of the time, like if military orders have changed, we get a good understanding of who our military families are that may be leaving or, or what families may be moving out of district because they're buying house, a house in another district or out of state or whatever. So those, we can capture that. We do not at this point have an exiting survey for those who may choose to go to one of the inter-district magnets that we do not have. That would be
I think that could be, yeah.
Sure.
That would be informative again for the board, just to get an understanding of, of what people's choices, you know, why. And again, of course, anonymized completely for, you know, privacy concerns.
With that intent to return, a lot of times the administrators or the secretaries, even the classroom teachers may be more aware at their level of a family's move, whether it's orders, whether they bought a new house, what, whatever the case may be. You know, not just military, but other businesses will move to different locations, you know, too.
Yeah, I think it'd just be good to know, you know, for the board to understand, like, you know, if they're, you know, hypothetically speaking, if there was like, you know, an undercurrent of like a reason that was not compulsory, but voluntary.
No, I think it's a great idea, but the answer is no, we, we do not do that.
Yeah, I'd be curious to, to know, like, or to kind of brainstorm some ways we could try to capture that information. And looking at the page, oh, I forgot to change. Yeah, no, no, page three. The grade level enrollment. Looking at, I'm glad you noted that, yeah, there's, there's a significant drop from you know, eighth grade to ninth grade, you know, and that's, to me, that's intuitive, like, I, I, I can intuitively grasp that because there are a lot of choices. That's when people start to make, you know, real choices about what they want to do with, you know, career paths. And so I, I, I'm not surprised to see that drop. I would be curious to see like kind of over a broader span of time, just kind of get a sense of what the average is over like, you know, past five, 10, you know, fifteen years or so, just to, you know, again.
To ninth specifically?
Oh, yeah, you know, and, and, and maybe even, you know, just like
Like that half
Yeah, that, that, that secondary, the middle school and, and through high school years, because that's where a lot of decisions are being made, I think. And they could manifest in the middle of middle school or at the break between middle school and high school or, you know, a year into freshman. You know, they, they, again, like that, that big drop between ninth and tenth also intuitively doesn't, you know, shock me necessarily because that's also like, you know, when decisions are being made and, and, you know, uh, maybe someone, you know, they do want to go to a tech school or a science school or something else. But yeah, just to get a sense of the historical average. Because if there is a spike, we might see it in that, you know, in a broader spectrum.
And thinking back even to your exit surveys, and, and it's not this, but it's a good, it may help us. I know part of the work that Ben Moon has been doing, just to capture some data for, you know, as part of that grant that he's been working on. Um, he's been really looking at like those career pathways at the, at the lower level, at the elementary level. And some of the questions were really pointed and, and insightful, and that even could give us a little bit of information as we move forward, like to be able to compare who were those students who really had their passion here and where did they end up? So
Right.
totally rammed the thought, but going back to your exit. Yeah.
And I had a note here, CEP status. What, you, you use the CEP status in regards to the high-needs group and
Community Eligible Program.
That's
So if you have a certain percentage in a school, a whole school could be eligible for free and reduced lunch. And I understand that it's the same way with more, multiple schools. Like, we just recently had applied or Ernie recently applied for the CEP for Fitch High School. And I think there was a cost factor on his side, but it was definitely worth it. So he used some of the enterprise fund to make sure we establish that. But now all of our students at Fitch High School get free breakfast and lunch. And it definitely was worthwhile. And I think we'll even notice it in our budget, not having so many outstanding
No. Now, is that a thing that could be impacted by this drop in economically disadvantaged?
I'm not sure.
But do we?
That's why I want to find out. We're gonna get, get together and definitely investigate this.
So, yeah, so we'd want to get a sense of what the threshold is.
I know that once you're a CEP, was it Sam for four or five years?
Four years.
So Fitch is just on, so they have four, you know, this year and three more. And the others got on, what was it, two years ago? So, yeah, this year and another year.
Yeah, that definitely would be good information for us to know.
I agree.
I'll, I'll pass for now. I gotta digest a little bit.
And you know, you know where to find us. So even if a thought comes like in the middle of the night, you can text me. I won't answer anything. But you know where to find us and you can ask us questions.
Oh, um, yes. So the special education population by school. Excuse me. The, the Mystic River Magnet School was, as you noted, significantly higher. Now, I thought that my impression was in all discussions with that, that was somewhat by design. Because that we were centralizing or like, you know, kind of like trying to you know, use resources in the most economical fashion as far as like trying to have like a central area.
And that was my understanding. SV Butler, it was the schools, you know, was, that was the school that housed the ABA program. So we had done that in the past as well.
Okay.
So, and when we built the schools, we wanted to build them with the capacity to run those programs.
Understood. I think that's it for now. Yep, thank you.
Jay, Jen was next, and then I see Adrian's hand. I'm just letting you know on your phone.
So I'm gonna start from the beginning. That's okay. I'm sorry, I have the page. I don't have the pages. I'm in this one.
Grade level enrollment?
Yes.
Yep.
Um, was kindergarten especially left out for you?
Yes, because I wanted to give you the breakdown later on with the whole transitional kindergarten being introduced this year. That was really the only reason. The numbers there, two hundred and seventy-two kindergartners.
Oh, okay, so it's two seventy-two?
Yep.
Okay.
And the sixty-seven that would have been eligible would have been added to that number in the past.
Right.
In the past, okay.
So it was fairly in line with last year's numbers as well. We do have some students that did not end up going into transitional kindergarten because for one reason or another, through whether it be IEPs and PPTs, they, they opted to keep them in the program they were currently in. So there's a little bit of fluctuation there, but other than that, the numbers are pretty in line with last year's kindergarten.
With the waiver process, so there were certain children, mostly in the area of September, October, that did qualify for kindergarten.
Yeah.
And went ahead and went in.
Yeah.
So if that's the case, then the numbers on this chart, the rack out to the enrollment number of three nine eight seven. Because if I take the sum of all those first grade to twelfth grade and then adding the two seventy-two, that does not come out to like three thousand nine eighty-seven. So there must be some other population.
Did you have preschool in there too?
Uh, preschool is not included in
In that two seventy-two?
Right.
Okay.
So preschool, pre-K, and then I believe Transition Academy, which is beyond grade twelve.
Got it. So we're good. So that, that three, I guess, bar charts should total like five oh seven or somewhere around there. Okay, thank you. I just wanted to make sure that we've accounted for all the students. Agreed with what Ian said, between ninth grade and tenth grade decreasing, or eighth grade to ninth grade decreasing because we have kids leaving to go to mag, the magnet schools or Grosso. So now I'm going to the enrollment by race and ethnicity. I think with this part and the subsequent charts, when we give percentages, it's good to give the count so that we can translate it because forty-five percent of a hundred or forty-five percent of four thousand or a thousand, we need, you know what I mean? So in this case, I'm assuming this number is the three, three thousand nine eighty-seven. And then that's what I'm using to multiply to these percentages. It's just more like so that we can digest the information.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure I'm following. There are counts in the pie in the, inside, the counts are in the inside?
Oh, maybe not this one, but like the subsequent ones, like I'm really having, I apologize for that one. But like the subsequent ones, like
High need subgroup?
Like the high need subgroup, special ed, limited English and all of that. Like, I just I, I just couldn't get a grasp of like, what's, what is the four percent, you know? And I guess if I had gone back to my spread, my presentation from last week, I think I did have the numbers for high needs. I shouldn't have to go back to my spreadsheet of my, my charts from last week. And Filipino is with a F, not a P.
It actually can be done both ways.
Um, since like nineteen, no, it's Um, since like 90, no, it's an F. It can be done both ways, but they prefer the F.
I thought the column didn't have enough. I thought the column didn't have enough.
It doesn't.
Okay.
But they, they, I don't know, they just prefer the F. I don't know why they prefer that.
No, but I've seen it for the P too.
They report it both ways. I'm, who, when you say they though, are you specifically talking about the group?
The group of people. Well, I could talk about them because that's my parents' heritage.
Okay. No, I didn't want to know who they were. That's.
Filipino community will identify itself with an F.
That's how they do it. Like when you see things like, whether it's in York or the little things that they have here, it's always an F. It's always an F. So I don't, I don't know why they picked the F, but regardless of wherever I've been, it's always been an F. Because when I was a, when I was a kid, the country was a P. And then I was like, why are they using an F? So it's just in case you use it somewhere else.
Financially, it should be an F.
And then, like I said, with the other slides here, it's just needing the numbers so that we. Yeah. And like, it's almost like this, like the whole reason we did the magnet school, right, is to ensure that our schools are racially balanced. So even though we get to see this at the district level, it's almost better, like if you want to have a pie chart and then like a subsequent taking like just schools and then saying like, okay, maybe you don't need to break it down to like all this level of detail, but maybe take the top three or the top four and show so that we can see by school the spread, if that's important to the group. Because I mean, that was like the whole reasoning for it. So we need to make sure that the original intent of board's path is actually being achieved. Rather than looking at it at district, we always knew as a district, we were diverse. The complaint they had was that certain schools were not as diverse. So with us doing the magnet, just, that's like one important thing.
Well, that and socioeconomic balance is was another meaning, you know, in 2020.
Yeah. So I do have that, so I can send that to you. And I'll make sure to include it in future presentations.
And that'll be sent to the whole board?
Sure.
Thank you.
And then this is going back to like, I was like, starting to think like when Dean was asking about the economically disadvantage and the students filling out or the families filling out the form, is the assumption that everybody, everyone is okay. And then when we, when they turn in the form, then we decide, because now we have evidence, we can put them in the economically disadvantaged. So the people who do not respond, who may be economically disadvantaged, we're counting them as being non-economically disadvantaged? Is that how I'm supposed to read this?
I'm not sure. I'm, I'm not sure I understand what you're asking.
So the general population starts off not economically disadvantaged. And then as we get paperwork.
Right.
We say that they're economically disadvantaged. Yes, I'm an economically disadvantaged family and I don't fill out the paperwork.
They're not counted.
Well, I am not counting.
No, no, no. There's SNAP benefits that we automatically know.
Yes, I apologize.
Yes. And then, and then the forms also would confirm for those families that we already know. Or they confirm for families that don't get SNAP benefits and didn't show up that way. So. But it's something, can I get to, can we meet with Ernie so we can get you a little more detail on that?
Okay.
I don't want to misspeak either. So.
Yeah, I was just trying to.
Yeah, I know.
Data was collected.
Yeah. It's a little confusing.
Yeah, I think that'd be good to have a follow-up, like sort of whole discussion on our presentation.
That's probably something that's important, right? Because then we could lose some of our funding. So we definitely.
I brought it to the attention of the state that we're very unique. And I brought it to the attention of Congressman Courtney too. Don't know that our military folks are getting the benefits that they deserve.
All right. I'll start with the hardest one first. So back to the first and second pages. The enrollment per school. Do we know what the capacity of the schools are? And then separately, the more important thing is the functional capacity. Meaning like if you're the principal of that school, you know, and, you know, the school seems to run well with 500 kids. But once I have 550, you know, the wheels start to fall off. Do we know any of those numbers or do we have that as a district? Like, is obviously the, the middle school, maybe 900, I mean, we know the capacity. I think we talked about it somewhere like 1,050 or, or maybe a little more than that. But the, but the, well, that.
The person in charge at the time, we really found that that was like the, having everything filled all at once and not having teachers have their own.
Yeah, that's 25 kids in every classroom or something, right? I mean, that, that's not an actual reasonable capacity. So I think it would be helpful, and this would probably be something we'd have to ask the principals. But for us to know what the, and, and I'm really wondering on Charles Barnham. Because there's so much influx in that school. If their functional capacity, let's see, they have 340 kids, is 350, and all of a sudden they have 370 or 380. Like it. So we, we just change the bussing a little bit or something or?
Yeah, and I apologize for interrupting. I, I apologize for that. So we look at that. That's part of that weekly enrollment snapshot that I was telling you about. Our, our registration monitors very closely with myself and there's, you know, there's a team that looks at that closely. So every time a new student comes in, where numbers are moving, we have an accurate count of those numbers and we know exactly how many students we can place in a particular class. And we follow board policy based on that. And so when any class or grade level gets to a certain number, we monitor it very closely. And then when it hits a certain number, we then have to move them to another building potentially. So, and that's where like, we have to look closely at where their bus stops nearby. What are their students are in that area that may be going to another school? Does that grade level have availability? Like, there are a lot of pieces that do go into that, but we, we try, we can't, we don't go over that cap.
All right.
Very rarely.
So do we have, I mean, that's a really general number then, what I'm, what I guess I'm asking. Because if you, if you have 80 kindergarteners and you'd like to have 60, well, then that's, that's a big problem. But the school, school number might be, you know, might be fine. It's a total number. But I guess for comparison's sake, it would be great to know what the principals feel like their buildings could handle.
I've been looking for one extra classroom somewhere in town and there's not even one extra classroom. Like the classrooms are all full. I think CK has a STEM room. And Thames River and Mystic River may have something like a science room additional. You know, but they're pretty filled to capacity when I look and, and you know about the middle school. It's overfilled.
Yeah.
So, it, you know, I do think, I would like to ask the question though to the principal, how does, how do those buildings run best? Like, what is your kind of goalpost number that you feel in, you know, having lived that life? With these numbers, I mean, these numbers since I've been here have been pretty consistent. Even with the two new schools, they had said you can fill it to 600. And there was no way. And, and they said that had to be to, in order to get funds, but that was some, I don't know, that was misinformation. And we never filled it to 600. And I can't even imagine running those schools with 600. I don't know where I'd put them. So.
Well, and when you think of even some of the bodies, right, when you get up into like fourth and fifth grade at the elementary levels, to, to say board policy, right, we can put 24 students in a fifth grade classroom. It's fine on paper, but when you've actually sat in a, a fifth grade classroom with 24, you know, boys and girls, you know, plus their desks and the size of their desks. Yeah, that functional capacity really does.
Matter.
Matter.
Yeah. Well, I mean, maybe there's some, we should look at all the board, the numbers on that. And what I had asked the question, I think it was in the beginning of September about, you know, about enrollment in classes. And at that time I was really interested in, in knowing, like in one school, are we putting 20 kids in every kindergarten classroom, which I think most teachers would say is not going to be a successful classroom, even though I think board policy might say that we can do that. I think that from a learning standpoint, you know, seems like, what is it, 16, 17 would be great for most teachers. So it would be nice to know where we are by school, by grade. You know, at least in, especially in those early elementary where it really matters. You know, because kids are just, you know, behaviors and all that. They're getting used to school and they're just kids.
I can tell you almost every one of our kindergarten classes is that capacity.
So they're at 20, is it 20?
20, 21?
20.
I think there might be a few that are 18 now.
Yeah, there, I think, I believe, actually now that I'm not sharing, I can, I can look at that. I believe, yeah, I do believe Northeast may have a few seats left and possibly CK, but don't quote me on that.
And we have to be careful with them because they're a four-tier school, K and one, but then they go down to a three-tier school. So that whatever we put in K and one, you know, you either have to add a teacher, which happened at NEA. Just a few years back, I think those kids are now fourth or fifth graders and we've had to keep an added teacher going through because of that, because it was just too full. We filled it up too much in K and one. And then when it went down to three tier, you couldn't keep it that full.
Yeah.
So it was fine when you have four, but when you went down to three, it wasn't so fine.
Yeah, we have, we have like, just as an example, Charles Barnham actually, now, again, we haven't run numbers for, for this past week yet. So again, that could change, but it looks as though Charles Barnham may have like two seats. CK, two, three seats maybe. And Thames River, I think, has about the same and that's it. So when you think about like the number of students that move in and out and the potential of, you know, a couple more families, military families coming in, yeah, it's, it's hairy.
Yeah. Well, I think from, from my perspective on the board, I know that you guys have these projected numbers in, in the summer. It would be great to know because I know that other districts, the board will be included in saying that we think we need a couple of more teachers. And the district, if that's the case, should feel comfortable asking the board that. Whether that we can afford that in the budget or what else, you know, what else needs to get adjusted to make that happen. Those discussions can happen, but from, from a board standpoint, I would like to be like, ready, but also like notified or, or at least understand, you know, I'm really concerned about like the littles, right? Those, those kids that, 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 you know, aren't doing as well as we'd like to in those early years. And if there's things that, that can be done better, you know, what are the teachers, you know, I was asking the principals, what do the teachers want? Well, maybe the kindergarten teachers would like to say that we'd like a couple, a few, few children and we can do a lot better for you. And that's something that I think the board would like to hear and maybe support.
We're investigating, looking into an enrollment study. So, and that could, that correlates with that MAP version because we had done it a while and we didn't do the MAP. So we're, we're talking to some folks to figure out what that cost would be, but I'll let you know. And then just to have a, a more standardized way of looking at that enrollment, if they can have a better grasp of it.
Yeah. Well, I imagine there's got to be studies on success and number of kids in classrooms. I mean, we're not, this isn't new. So it would just be nice to, to know what those numbers are. And, you know, I mean, we have, I, I've, I've looked at our teacher ratios compared to other towns. And if you look at general ed teachers versus the total population of students, Grotton is at about the state average, but we're, we're higher. And I think I had emailed, I think I, I'd done some calculation on that. But I think we're higher than a lot of surrounding districts by a fair amount. You know, where I think we're, I don't want to quote the numbers because I did them a couple of months ago, but we, we are definitely higher students per, per teacher than a lot of the surrounding districts that we're caring to.
But also going back to the kindergarten numbers I was just telling you about, been mine too. So we have those seats available. We could get a couple more kids in, but we also could be losing a couple. Again, it's very fluid. So while we, we say we only have two seats left right now, we can have three exit in a week. I mean, truly, it's, it's just dependent on the week. It's dependent on the day. It's dependent on the grade level. There are a lot of factors. So again, that's the reason that we, we monitor it so closely.
Yeah. No, I mean, I guess, you know, again, to say, it'd be great if we had, if 20 kids per classroom wasn't the rule. You know, if, if, if we had a little bit of cushion in there.
Oh.
Where if we have, because I know there's, there's teacher contracts with maximum number of students as well. And so that we're not up against those all the time.
Yep, totally agree. And it's what's best for kids. I mean, right?
All right. So that was a harder one. So, and then this was just a, when we're talking about total enrollment, the out of district students. In the state report card, it says we had, I think, 4,400 children last year, students last year. Is that, are, in those numbers of like how many kids, like cost per student, the total enrollment, meaning the, including the 400 students that aren't in our schools. It was 400 and something. I gotta look at what page that was on.
477 this year, 461.
Yeah. Yep. When we calculate our cost per student, is that number included? 477? So if we go on the state report card for the district, it said we had, you know, it said we had 4,400 kids, average was 19,000 and something per child was the average.
Yep.
So they would include all those out of district because those are students that we have to actually pay for, for the most part.
Yeah. And then there's also, like you sprinkle in some of our friends from like Sacred Heart, where typically we don't pay for them, but if they happen to have an IEP, there could be funds that are sent to them for that. So there's, there's layers to it, if that makes sense. So I guess I'm not really sure. Did I answer your question? I'm sorry.
Yeah. Well, it was mostly on, my, my question mostly is like, when we talk about cost per student, we're going on the total number, the combined total is what that state report card would go on?
Yep.
All right. And, um, yep, my other question, I rolled into the, the capacity one about the littles.
Jay, I think I'd see Beverly's hand up.
Beverly?
Hi, Bab. Hi, Susan. Let me turn on my video. I apologize. I just had a quick question and I just joined the meeting. So if you answered the question already, just let me know. I was just curious why we are losing students, like at the high school we lost, I forget, like 76 students. Why, do you have idea why we're losing these students?
We did. We did kind of cover that a little bit. We talked about the need to capture information on, as people exit.
Oh, good. All right. Thank you.
We typically see a drop from middle school to high school anyway, Beverly. Because our kids have so many choices. We talked about the inter-district magnet choices, the grasso tech, the ledgered agriculture. So they've got a lot, which is a good thing that they have so many. So we do tend to see a dip because of that from, you know, eight to nine. But we did, we do have more questions around this that we really want to investigate.
Susan, is it possible to get class sizes at some point? I mean, yeah.
We do a weekly report. We can get you some information after this. Like you could actually see, you know, divide, you know, you'll see the total number at a school and then you'll see how the class sizes break out. We don't, I don't think we have that level of data easily accessed at the middle school, but we could get you like roundabout numbers. We've done that at Fitch and, and Grotton Middle, like at the core level classes. So we could get you more information for sure.
Okay. Yeah, it'd be nice to have class sizes too. All right. Thank you.
Since you're going to be talking about that soon at one of your next meetings about what is the board's kind of magic number, what is the board's recommended class size? And I think it would help to have this information so that you all will be making that decision soon.
All right. Thank you. All right, thank you.
Okay, we have a full agenda. But if you do have other questions, you know, certainly you can send them our way.
Yeah, please feel free to email me if you need any clarification or have additional questions. Anytime.
Here, I just wanted to a general comment is just um. You know, to follow up on what Adrian was saying, as far as, you know, looking at like. Um, class numbers and numbers of teachers and and you know, with that, of course, uh, what you mentioned, Susan is. You know, certain, I mean, it sounds like a lot of the schools are at capacity or exceeding capacity in in a lot of ways. So I mean, all that. Keeping us. Close in on the loop and giving us the data that, you know, we ask for as far as like more articulation on that. Gives us the 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 information we need to be stronger advocates. Or getting the district what it needs to function uh, at its best capacity.
And I certainly appreciate that.
Hundred percent or hundred and fifteen percent capacity. Right.
Yeah, thank you.
Did have one question that relates to finances. Uh, last year we were barely not eligible for some supplemental military funds. And uh, I had asked Lauren to get me figures of military enrollment figures, which she graciously provided. They're pretty stable, eight fifty-one and twenty-two, eight fifteen and twenty-three, eight hundred and fourteen and twenty-four for that October first date. So I was wondering if whether our. Seventy, whatever number lower that we had in total population. Uh, at that date in time, which is the date we go by, plus a slightly lower, just the the. Basically the same numbers last year minus one, whether that alignment of numbers might make us eligible this year. And I'd love you to take a first pass at figuring out.
We were talking about that because we we don't have to do the October one, but we we. Once we say we're going to use it, we've got to use it. But we've said, are there peaks and valleys? And natural trends over time that we're seeing more military students sitting in the seat. So we can really, so that's something that would be an interesting study to do. So I agree.
But what you're asking actually is true. So it looks at a a certain percentage, right? So if our overall enrollment population is lower. But that doesn't necessarily account for our military families, then then it kind of does this, right? So our percentage goes up because our enrollment goes down, as long as the enrollment that went down weren't all military families. But that also includes um. Civilians that are working on uh, working on federal property. That includes foreign governments and.
This never includes all of them. So if we had.
No, 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 I apologize. No, that's just active.
That's just active. So that eight hundred and fourteen. Divided by. What's the number guys?
Four thousand. Four hundred sixty-four.
That comes out to what?
Oh, I.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Say it again, I'm sorry.
Eighteen divided by four thousand.
About eighteen percent. But and then there's also the fact that. While that October one snapshot was what was available, it the. We have to do source checks and we don't know if between um. It that that doesn't account for anyone who may have been working on, it's so overloaded with information, but ba- the basic, the gist of it is. Like student uh, parents who may have been working on a federal base, that's not. Included in those numbers, but they count for us, like we get credit for them. But that's not reflective in those active duty numbers.
So we've got about eighteen and a quarter percent just in active duty.
For supplemental, I think we need twenty percent.
So we're one and a one and three quarter percent from the magic number, so.
For that, for that one thing, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I do know that I've got a couple of staff members that have a long drive home. So. Make sure, because we have an early walkthrough, I think.
Yeah. Lauren, if you can just email all of us.
Yep.
You know, there's a lot of questions, obviously, and a lot of we'll we'll get back to you, so.
Okay.
Be great to have. That information.
I'll put it all in one email to you guys, if that's okay. Um, I don't know if it's. Best, I know that typically Susan will put it in board notes, so like any follow up information and she usually includes there. Does that work?
Yeah, because that goes to the board and.
It goes to everyone. Okay.
Not to everyone, yeah. There are certain things that wouldn't go to everyone.
But but specific, okay.
But to be honest, I mean, if you had it all packaged up in the email that you sent with a certain subject line.
I can do that.
So they go follow up questions from whatever this meeting's date. That would make it easier for me to search through my emails and locate it. And then like I could download the.
The information.
Yeah.
Are you all.
Embedded 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 links in board notes are um, really hard to retrieve.
Oh, okay.
Well, it's just six months later when you're like. I know this came up, I'd like to look back.
Got it.
And then you do a search. Embedded link is just doesn't come up in the searches.
Oh, okay.
Having a subject line that's of a date of a meeting or. Or you know, rough, you know, or like to type like each PDF. That would be attached would have a title on it.
Okay.
Those also pop up on email searches.
Okay, if you don't mind, can I have about a week to get it all together, just because there's like.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Seven other things that like, okay. If you told me I had to, I would, but if you can give me like a week buffer, that would be really great. Okay, perfect, I'm good, twelve and a half days is perfect. If I can get through November fifth, we're good. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Irene. You have quite a bit to share with us here.
I'll grab some charts.
Numbers, 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 numbers.
Exactly. So the the narrative is attachment two in your packet. So so far for FY twenty-five, you can see that our expenditures are down about thirty point one percent over FY twenty-four. And about point five percent over FY twenty-three. That's predominantly due to the increase in the budget or the staffing levels, so that's being driven by salaries and equipment. As of uh, September thirty to twenty-four, I broke it up by categories. You can see this is similar to how the the budget is loaded. So you can see. Salaries where we're at year to date. And one thing I just want to make sure um, that I clarify is Ray and also I have the same. Past practice that we brought into garden in that if we know of an expenditure, we make sure that we encumber it. We enter into a contract, we encumber it. Um, that way we truly know if there's a thousand dollar flexibility here and there, if we're if we're looking for funds that we need. To try and address the most unforeseen and unexpected. Particularly in the property services, we can see that we are already at a negative twelve point seven percent. Um, one thing to keep in mind is we did encumber those funds that we know that we have contractual obligations for. That's why that is falling in negative value at this point. And that's predominantly driven by water, sewer and um, disposal of our garbage. You're going to see there's also an increase in our heating and plumbing um, repairs and Sam may address that later during the discussion. The next area to look at that we're that we're watching is that supply item. That supply item isn't just your pens, pencils, paper, et cetera. That also includes your electric, your gas, your gasoline for the buses. We do know in the electrical area that we are seeing an increase in delivery charges from ever source. And it's due to the pandemic recruitment has started in the fall of this year.
You noticed it at home too.
That's impacting both commercial government, residential people that have ever sourced, it is that. Large increase in our electricity line this year. That's going to carry into future years in addition to the annual increase that's imposed for electrical. So that is an area that we are putting high on. The repair and replacement for equipment, um, that's also something I'm I'm keeping front of mind um, in discussions with Sam. We may have an increase in this category due to deferred maintenance. Or the deferment of purchasing vehicles through our capital improvement plan. So it's just something to keep. On your radar, but that is something that may impact. General fund operating budget this year. Transportation, you're also going to see that that is starting to. Um, increase and that is due to rising costs associated with some special education out of district transportation. We are seeing an increase in special education transportation overall. Um, but we are seeing an uptick specifically in the out of district transportation. And then um, the other business for the health insurance dashboard, that's only available on a quarterly basis. I know it's on your monthly update, so. You see the same report, it's because there's not additional thing available. Utilities dashboard, I plan to revise that because it's not capturing the full month. Of that utility utilities. It's only as of the date before I run the report video, so it's basically the Friday before it. Which isn't going to line up with your financials in the top grid. So um, I plan to make sure that we do that at the close of each month. So it would be the thirty of thirty-first, so you're looking consistent, you can see match numbers consistently. Meaning we'll have our utility bills booked and then I'll be able to run the financial statements. To reflect. Those utilities and one that numbers that you see in the detail below. The FY twenty-four audit, um, hopefully knock on wood, we're wrapping up this week. Um, there are just two additional items that are being addressed that I hope to have somebody if I was going to stay. And then there's a follow up meeting with the auditor and we have a town as well as myself on Wednesday. And then FY twenty-six, but it works, you stick a lot to the principles on, I believe, October. I first went a little later than I anticipated. Uh, but they are currently working on their budgets and then we just had our. Central office meeting today to discuss budgets, so we're keeping the keeping the weeds with the budget as well.
You have a question?
Uh, yes, this is something that maybe um, you could do in the future. I mean. With the supplies, you said the supplies not only include paper, but also include uh. Electricity, did you say that? Can you break that down for us?
Sure.
Okay.
Good segue, Bev.
Thank you.
There and show you some more detail.
I do have a quick question about uh, this as well. Uh, for the property services, uh, that that negative uh, trend. Is uh, what do we have to do about that? And I also think we have to start considering. Make creating some kind of remedy. So we don't get into an overage situation.
It's not necessarily creating revenue, but it's seeing if, you know, if we get. New grants that. We can attribute. Funding towards where we can move it out of the general fund, just keeping in mind it is just a one time source. Grants are only approved once a year. And it's not necessarily continuous, so we have to keep that in mind that it may come back. Typically, items like this, I tend to make sure that we have them in our general fund budget. And not necessarily rely on grants. So this is part of building up that non-lapsing fund. Where if we're seeing utility costs increase double digits like we are this year, that. There wasn't a pandemic recruitment notification set out, it just hits your bills. Then that's something that non-lapsing, you do a transfer from non-lapsing up into that particular line item to offset that cost.
Okay.
That's something similar that I've done in the past for um, the health insurance fund. If we're seeing health insurance trends, if we project at eight percent, but now we're seeing twelve percent. That's something that that is also available for, that you can. By a vote of the Board of Education, move it from non-lapsing up into your general fund budget.
Okay, thank you. Um, and. The uh. And the pandemic recruitment. I gotta say, this is the first time I've I've, I mean. This is the first time I've heard the phrase. A little phrase like that, you know, but. Yeah, it seems to be saying that these these companies are charging us for. Electricity that was dispersed over four years ago.
During the pandemic, yes. By providing the pandemic relief, the understanding is there would be a recruitment. And now it's time for that recruitment.
It weren't allowed to increase then. Right, understood, yeah.
They couldn't shut people's power off, right?
Yeah.
And they couldn't shut up.
And and um, there was no notice as far as like when that was going to come?
I didn't see a notice since I've been here. Ray didn't see the notice. He actually noticed a spike. In that electrical line item and. Um, that's something that we dug into over the past couple of weeks to find out why.
Right.
Because um, he did negotiate some reductions in um, heating oil and other areas that should have. Stabilized that whole area and it just didn't. And that's when we found that that was the double delivery charge.
Understood. And and so this is in my mind, this is correlating with the. Uh, public service fees that I've seen and some people complain about as far as on their ever source bills, would that be a correlation?
It's possible. It's in our particular bills for the school, it's in a delivery charge.
Labelled as pandemic recruitment or it's labeled as delivery charge? Interesting. So that is consistent with what I've seen. People post on their ever source bills.
It's happening.
And there's no explanation. Well, now we're we're kind of discovering this this language, but there was no notice, no broad notice of saying, hey, by the way, this is going to happen this a lot. Uh, that's a bigger conversation for another time, but thank you for bringing this to our attention and thank you for thinking of the um. You know, ways we strategize a way out of this. Is there any sense of how long this pandemic recruitment is going to go on? Do they have an end date? Is there a manager in charge of pandemic recruitment?
He actually reports to somebody else. That may be to ask our delegation, ask our delegation and.
So I I think that I'll save that for maybe like agenda items in the future, but maybe that's going to be good as a board and make an inquiry too. Um, because I don't want to see this. I understand why now it's happening. And uh, I also understand why now we can fully forecast for it. But we also do not. They they can't go on forever. All right, well, it's like, yeah, future agenda item and then this week is like explore all the names and numbers we need to explore and get in contact with.
So Jay, your hand is raised, but a couple of board members too hands raised, so go ahead and then we'll we'll go around the room.
All right, so um, yeah, I do remember when that hit the news a few months ago, and I believe some of our state reps did. Say that they were going to look into it. Maybe that's something they're going to dig into in the next session. Uh, because it hit um. Uh, residential bills pretty hard too. People were getting increases of at least a hundred dollars a month and up. Um, and so all the all the TV stations did do extensive coverage on it at the time and. And we did get a little insert in the bill, but I don't think it was in large print. Um, they did what was, I guess legally necessary to let people know why their bill spiked. Um, but I have a question about the. Um, health insurance dashboard. So we're used to seeing this, we there's always a lag, Irene. We're we're used to there being a lag, but it it. In the past, it's always been updated monthly. Now, I know we're going to be meeting with MDG on. November seventh and maybe they would have a better. Understanding, but why why did we go from a monthly update to to quarterly? Do we know?
My understanding from Ray is the information comes to us orally from.
No, we always used to get them monthly. It's just, we we never got. You know, like by now, what by now we would have typically seen August. Um, and I see we're still going back to July. So I I. There just seems to be a larger lag, so maybe that I'm going to put that on a list for something to ask MDG why this. Uh, timing has changed. Um, because we used to be able to get the update in a monthly. But. Uh, other than that, that's all I have.
I just have a couple of questions on.
That's where we're going next.
I felt like you presented this already. Okay, because like we were talking about this, so then I feel like, oh, we must have just had to look at three, so I'll wait till after your presentation then.
Okay, I have three questions. Uh, I noticed right away it said may experience increases due to deferred vehicle replacement. Every time I see deferred maintenance or deferred this or deferred that. I kind of begin to itch and wondered uh. If we have a replacement vehicle. Cycle document. If we do, could we see it? If we don't, shouldn't we have one?
That's something I can work on Sam with Sam with, um, and you could probably.
That's something I can work on Sam, with Sam with. And he could probably address that better than I can.
We do not have that list at this time. We had one previous about three or four years ago. We, we were on a sixteen year cycle with the vehicles, the sixteen vehicles that we had. And about three, four years ago, they stopped funding that. And so it's been dropped since then. So we're probably out of kilter with it. I'd like to get back on.
Great. I know you'll do your fair best.
Are you referring to the the vehicle replacement schedule up for the whole town?
I noticed that we, I'm now looking at the health insurance dashboard and remain, enrollment remains down three percent from the same period last year. It's been going down every year. And I'm trying to understand the continuing increases in those choosing not to enroll. How much of it is spouses getting the coverage so that parent employees don't need it? How much is due to young and healthier employees figuring they don't need it? And how much of it may be due to employees at the lower end of our, of our salary scale who simply feel they can't afford it? Could we look into that? Get back to it. Finally, the third thing is an easy peasy one. Where I'm looking now at energy dashboard, electricity costs where we have the figure of year to date of two hundred and forty six thousand. And then I see the other four years, which is the full year. It would be really nice if there could be a horizontal line on the previous years that showed where we were on that year's thing for the same period, same period of year. So we could just look at it and see if our horizontal line is above or below an equal period from the of this year is equal or below to an equal period of the preceding year. I am looking at energy dashboard, electricity costs, but it applies to all of them. That's just the exact. So this year we've spent two hundred and forty six thousand and change to year to date. Well, a year to date ago in fiscal year twenty four, I'm sorry, fiscal year twenty three, where would that, where would a horizontal line appear for the same date? Where would it appear for twenty two? And then we can look at that and say, oh, that just cars correlates to inflation or or maybe that correlates to a very harsh winter, but I think that would be useful to have a horizontal line there.
Right.
If you think I'm mistaken, I accept your judgment, but.
No, I, I wholeheartedly agree. We basically want you to update the chart to be a true comparison at the same period each year instead of having year to date totals for the four prior years and then only a three month snapshot of where we're currently at.
Exactly.
Okay.
So thank you very much.
Okay, so the breakdown. Basically, all the numbers that make up that spreadsheet that I'll roll together, anything in your account numbers one hundred series is what drives that salary number on the narrative. Anything in your two hundreds is going to be benefits. And then your three hundreds start getting into professional services. Once we start getting into four hundred, those are where our purchase services are. And these were the areas that I was letting you know that there's some, we're seeing some increase in four ten, which is line number eighty six. So we're seeing an increase in water. We're seeing an increase in sewage, which is the one right below that. And that's line number eighty seven. Garbage removal. This is, is driven twofold because because we're encumbering for the contracts that we have, this is now showing what our true cost is estimated out towards the end of the fiscal year. So you can see if we're just doing a year to year comparison, it looks like it's a huge increase. When I'm looking at actuals to actuals, that's when we're starting to see that, you know, an extra twenty thousand minutes above what we had budgeted. Snow removal, of course, we haven't had yet, but that all falls into that area of those, the services. So we're also seeing the uptick in the, the heating and plumbing repairs due to the HVAC being delayed and that we need to get hopefully passed through CIP this round. And an increase in rentals.
Quick, just a privilege. Is there, can we put the line and have it whole thing highlight? I'm having a hard time tracking where your cursor is.
Sure. It might not let me because I'm in PDA.
Never mind if it doesn't work.
So it's basically nine, it's line number ninety five is the heating and plumbing repairs. And then we're also having an increase in rentals in line number ninety eight. And then the next section is when I was talking about, we're seeing an increase in the pupil transportation in five, ten, eleven and twelve. We're seeing a reduction in, where we're seeing an increase in regular, we're seeing a reduction in the special education, but I do believe that this needs to be reallocated. It perhaps may have been encumbered in one line item instead of spread out two to three different categories as it needed to be. The touchpad on this is very sensitive, so I apologize if it runs really fast down the, down the line here.
Irene, can you, Irene, can I ask a quick question? What do you mean by rent rentals other? What is, what's that specifically?
That's typically if we rent either equipment or it could be, you know, an extra classroom that we rent. I can get the addition, the detail on that rentals other for you.
Okay, thank you.
So in lines number one seventy four, one seventy five, one seventy six, one seventy seven. Those particular line items are the utility, gas, fuel, oil, and the gasoline for the school buses that I had mentioned. These are driving huge increases. Because we have encumbered the funds for our electricity. So we do anticipate that that will be an area of about five hundred thousand dollars that we'll need to cover throughout the budget year. Same thing for gas. Fuel oil is not that much, but we are seeing the gasoline for the school buses go up as well. So these are areas that we'll be focusing on and continue to watch to see if there's some movement or if there's other ways that we can try and pay for these or other areas of the budget that we can shift due to, you know, new grant funds coming in so that we won't run into a situation where we're trying to cover this in the last quarter of the fiscal year.
I admit to being confused. I thought we had a contract, we participated in this contract. So we can get fixed our costs for gasoline for the year.
In the gasoline we did, but that is something that the prices were negotiated, I believe, after the budget was complete. But I can pull that data that was provided by Ray. But the major one that's driving this whole area to be over expended is line number one seventy four. It's electricity.
Irene, when do you think we would see some savings because we have the solar on some of our schools? Well, at least in the middle school.
That's something Sam might be able to speak to better. We are looking at not only solar, but something else happening with these tools internally. There is a, a current, I believe, bill that ever source is attempting to take back seven percent of that net metering at this point in time. That bill I don't believe has passed, but that is another area that we're watching. So that if we do have savings due to solar, that we're not estimating that we're going to keep one hundred percent anymore. It is something that perhaps ever source will be able to take seven percent back. So typically the, the credits, the net metering credits would show up on your ever source bill. My past experience, and this is now my fourth state, is it all depends on the person that's basically keying in the data on where the credit's applied. But that is something that will partner with my counterpart at the town and we'll try and set up a meeting with ever source. They try and understand what they're doing, how they're tracking it, where the net metering credit is. And this is not specific to Groton. I've been in several other counties and the only place I've seen where it's been successful is where we took it on upon ourselves to have a third party manage all our solar and manage all the disbursements. And we actually sold to our neighboring towns and schools because we had excess capacity. So that's, that's where I've seen it successful.
Moving forward, as, as those conversations happen, can we just make sure to document them and have them memorialized as far as whatever understandings are established amongst the town board or, you know, through the financial office and ever source? That there, things are written down.
Definitely, definitely.
Thank you.
It's, there's a, I have a request in with our current rep to try and have them come and meet with us. And I'll, I'll try again. And perhaps it's, they need to meet with the board.
Are those attempts documented as well? You're.
Yes.
Send those a email or.
Yes.
Okay, good.
Yes, the, the phone calls got to the point where I said, no more phone calls of documentation now.
Yeah, thank you. And just to be clear, so our sources looking at like, there's a bill in the fore that is possibly running. They want more. They want to diminish the savings that we could have.
From net metering, correct.
So.
That's on top of the pandemic recruitment.
I'm, I'm, yeah, I'm on secondhand information with ever source because live in the city, but you know, I do hear, I see.
Were there any other questions about the line item detail?
And I know these are small, but sometimes the small things can end up being causing you on. So line thirty six other, like five, it's just like, I don't like other songs and acts about other. I know what that is. And then there's another one that's, that is classified, but it's like line number seventy six student intern. We're paying like potentially sixty thousand. And I'm, I'm just looking at it just because I know we're like financially challenged. And then the nurse encumbrance. It's only like five seventy one, but like the numbers that were asked about earlier were like nine hundred, between nine hundred and one point two million. So I'm not really sure why that's only five seventy one.
I believe they're shown in two different places.
Oh, okay.
It does total to the nine, the nine ninety. And I do have a note in the finance and facilities group. I still have it to follow up on identifying what's in each, what's underneath each of the other line items.
Thank you. Please wait till then. I'll just keep asking. And yeah, and then this is going back to the finance one, maybe in that pivot table if we can add like a, a line item category so that we can also see the same categories that are here. So like all the salary ones fall together. All the play benefits fall together. And I know, no, I know. It's just better to have it.
It, it's already there. Cause that's what drove, that's what drove the chart. So it's already there.
Thank you. I can wait till you don't need to get that. Next.
Just a quick question on line one nineteen telephone. That's, I guess, over encumbered. I mean, why?
It's not necessarily over encumbered. It's what we, what we anticipate that we're going to spend. So that.
So spending, we anticipate spending more than was budgeted.
Right.
I was wondering why on that and if we could do it, do it with less phones.
It's actually, I can look at the actuals, the trending from the prior years. If the budget was built and then, because I wasn't here when the budget was built, if the budget was built and then reduced. Then our budget wouldn't necessarily reflect our actuals and our past trends, but I can look and see what that is.
Cause this would probably be a contract, right?
Switch over. And I don't know if you remember that that was not in the right category when we switched it over so that but I thought we had corrected that with this budget. We'll look into it. That's a plenty of questions.
I, I think I'm just going to do kind of a blanket comment. I think anything, for me, anything that is showing a negative percent available. You know, I think I want to take a, we should take a, a close critical look at and see, you know, what's causing that down, that that overage or that projected overage? And, and is it a thing that we have to commit to? Or is it something that we can set on the shelf for now? And deal with, you know, when we, because I'm looking forward to creating a budget, you know, with you fresh, you know, because last year was a bit of a, you know, which bag. So yeah, so like whatever we do to eliminate the negatives over, that we're looking at, that we're projecting already. I think we have to, we have to look at that. And to understand like what's inside those, what, what would it cost?
Right.
What's the actual impacts here if we wanted to, to get at that? Cause there's some things that, you know, we can't avoid. Heating and plumbing repairs. You know, people, transportation. But yeah, the telephone thing, getting understanding better, any of that. The student intern thing, I'm not sure what that's all about, as Jen identified. You know, yeah, anything that, that is projecting a negative to get like a, a full understanding exactly what's causing that. And then how, and then best recommended practices and how to address it.
That's great to have this level of detail.
Really appreciate it.
Yeah. Any other questions on the detail? And then we briefly, it's touched on the insurance, I'm sorry, the dashboards. Is that something you want those presented as well? There's not any changes from when you last seen them. And I have the notes on some of the updates that you're looking for.
I just want to say I did appreciate your note in the narrative about like getting things lined up so that we're looking at things through the same lens.
Okay, any other finance questions? And I thank you and I hope you have a great Monday.
Thank you, thank you Irene.
Thank you.
I just want to say I'm gonna, I'll, I'll leave in person and I'll check back in online in about fifteen, twenty minutes. Mason.
We're on building grounds. Sam, that would be you.
It is. Good evening.
We want to defer him to the end of the meeting.
I'll stop.
It's gonna be the first time, Jay. First time under your leadership though. So I, I got three main points that I, I want to talk about tonight. The first project that we're working on is the Charles Bottom Roof replacement. I will be attending the town council meeting tomorrow night. And the town manager sent me a, a couple of questions about what I'll be presenting there. His first question was about the estimate, when it was going to be done and what the reimbursement rate was for that. And Susan thought that we should inform you, remind you of what those are too. So the estimate for the, the final estimate for the project is nine hundred and ninety nine thousand, eight hundred and ten dollars. Just under the one million dollar that was approved in the CIP. We'll be doing the project, provided everything goes our way during the summer of twenty twenty five. And the reimbursement rate for this project, according to the state at this point is forty seven point five percent. The other thing that will be asked or that, that the town council will do tomorrow to at, tomorrow night at the meeting is to authorize the board to apply for the grant. They will be establishing the permanent school building committee as the building committee for this project. They will be establishing the permanent school building committee as the building committee for this project. And they will um authorize the preparation and draw uh, of, of the drawings and specifications for this project. So that's the Charles Barnum roof. Uh, the second item, uh, we uh, submitted our CIP projects uh, today. And the projects that uh, I submitted from the buildings and grounds department. Again, we resubmitted the Fitch High School football field, re-crowning and adding irrigation to that field. The new total for that is three hundred sixty seven thousand dollars. The second item is the uh, Northeast uh, Academy HVAC replacement. And that is to replace all the units on that building, three million nine hundred sixty three thousand dollars. And the Catherine Colnasky HVAC replacement project. And that one is four million one hundred ninety one thousand dollars. There's one more unit at. Uh, HVAC unit at CK because it's a slightly larger building, has one additional section of the, of, of that building. As opposed to NEA. NEA was not able to do that last section of the building because they didn't have the water capacity at the time. But now that uh, the water tower has been built in the neighborhood and they have sufficient water and pressure there. The uh, the original plan for the building had an additional four to eight room classrooms. That could be built on the uh, wing of the building that extends out toward the road. So um, as a potential project uh, at, at some other point if needed. Of course, the difficulty with uh, Northeast Academy is parking and uh, you know, it really impacts the neighborhood when. We have events going on there, so. A lot of concern from neighbors about parking, blocking driveways and all kinds of things down there. It's a, it's a road to park on. But that's a future item. The uh, the other items that uh, were submitted today uh, were the uh, we resubmitted the Fitch High School culinary arts upgrade. At six hundred thousand dollars. And we've added one more project uh, to that. Uh, you may recall that we replaced the, one of the two water heaters at Fitch High School this past summer. The second water heater is inoperable. It's leaking badly, needs to be replaced. And so I've submitted this one in at eighty five thousand dollars for the uh, second water heater. The third item on my list is uh, the bids for the HVAC testing that is required by the state. So we went out to bid. Uh, to do the testing, we're, we're allowed to do uh, one fifth of the uh, buildings per year. Uh, and so the first uh, two buildings that we will be uh, testing are Northeast Academy and Catherine Colnasky. Uh, and so the bids went out, they were due in last Friday. We have an apparent winning bid of the two uh, companies that did submit bids. Uh, which I need to justify this week and make sure that everything is included in the bid before I. Let that out uh, as a, as the winning bid. So I'll be checking that this week. Comparing it uh, with uh, what is needed and required uh, within the uh, the bid specs. Uh, so I'll have that by the end of the week and then I can share it with you the next time we meet. I think that's about. I, I think, oh, the other thing, uh, when I, when I talked about the CK and the NEA HVAC replacements. Um, you may recall that those buildings were done in two thousand eight, something like that. And the HVAC units were, were installed without the ability to dehumidify the uh, the returning air into the building. So. The uh, the reason that we would be replacing these units. Uh, at those two schools is so that we can add dehumidification capacity to it. Uh, in the meantime, we've been doing active dehumidification, which means that we run the boilers to dry the air. Uh, as it comes through the system, uh, which obviously is an expense uh, that uh, was meant to be temporary. And hopefully uh, these projects will go through.
I've got a question. Um, it's, it's a little bit off of these. Um, it's kind of one for Irene, but um, I figured I'd wait since it's for you. There's electricity. And the easy one for everyone to see is the lights at nighttime. In the buildings, like in this building, it seems like the room, the lights are off in the rooms that aren't occupied. And um, you know, and the janitors can turn it on. And I know in the new buildings, I guess they don't have light switches. Is that correct?
The custodian is not able to do that. It's in part of the DDC and um. Our electricians are still working with the original contractor to figure out exactly how to do that. So. We're in hopes that we can resolve that problem soon.
They don't automatically turn off and on like these.
Well, some of them do, but. If you, if you drive up Fort Hill in the middle of the night, you'll see that there are lights on. Drives me nuts.
Drives me nuts.
So is there any way, cause I know that we, we talked about this, you know, I don't know. February or March or something. I mean, is there any way um? To kind of put it on the front burner for um, for the contractor or? Just because now it's, you know, as electricity prices, it's going up more. Um, I mean, I remember reading about the same thing happening to some school in Massachusetts and uh, they were unfortunately. Um, had like every light on in the building for a year and a half or something. But um, but it, it seems like it'd be a great thing to try to, you know.
We have two electricians on staff and they've tried to remedy the problem on and off, and they were figured out. So that's why we're doing it.
So it's a, it's a, it's, it's a tech with a laptop problem, right? Versus a. Wiring issue.
No, it's not a wiring issue. That's correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a. Laptop or yeah, computerized somewhere is on point, yes.
What, what's?
Can I give you any sense of a timeline? I don't have one at the moment, right? I have to check back in with my electricians and see where we stand with.
Thank you.
System's so smart.
Yeah, I guess I'm, I'm. What sort of, what system is this? Listen, I, you said DDC, what is that?
Uh, that's a building management system, so.
Building management system. Alright, and so it's like a software issue, a programming thing?
Yes.
And it just. Saying that it's afraid it can't do that?
They fix it and then the lights don't work at all?
If it was that simple, we would have had it fixed by now.
This, this is incredible though. To think that we don't have control over the lights in the building.
They're not all on.
Right, but. Who's running the management system?
It's, we, we run the management system, but those lights are not controlled on this, this particular system here. They haven't been able to figure that out.
Okay. Are all these communications being documented? Over memorialize an email?
A prob, I, I haven't emailed them. My, my electrician's been talking directly with them.
I would, I would, I just, not speaking as the, as the board, just an individual board member. Um, I'm. In my own experience. When I get frustrated, I start documenting things and then I start, you know, investigating other options as far as like. I mean, we are getting uh, you know. We're paying a lot of money, like that, that mu, that power's coming. I mean, now we've got pandemic recruitment. Yeah, this is all part of the plan. It, it's, it, yeah, so we need to get control of the situation. And, and so, yeah, I would recommend that we document, 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 and then we stay, talk to Floyd. Um, and figure it out, you know, cause. You know, the contractor that, that's sold us this, uh, did they disclose the fact that you won't be able to turn off lights? Yeah, I'm sorry. It, it, yeah, it's, um, anyways.
But, side note. But speaking of electricity and the cost of electricity.
Yeah.
Which also brings up uh, one other item, which I didn't have on my list today, but I happen to be talking to, we talked to the town this afternoon. About the charging stations, the EV charging station at the schools, which people park their cars and charge on our electricity. And we pay for that electricity too. And they are there twenty four seven. Some, some people leave their cars there all day long, all night long.
Are we able to turn those off?
We, I could turn the switches off um, wi, with somebody's permission. I wouldn't do it without permission from the board, at my permission.
You did ask the town though.
The town as of today, as a group that are um, they, they are going to be uh. Adding something to their system, uh, to their charging station so that they can charge for it.
Well, we asked, we asked if they would do that and they said no. So now they are gonna do that, so we should be able to do it.
Originally, when I spoke to them first time, they said it was gonna be worth the money to do it.
Okay.
But I was told today that uh, they're working with a company to do that. The company that they're working with was here doing something else and that somebody there at the public works department talked to them about this. So I do know that an electrician, uh, oh, electrician from Montville is actually gonna be doing the installation for them. So we've been dealing with electrician right here in town who has been doing the repairs with us. Uh, on these EV stations, which have been running up to twenty five hundred dollars every time that somebody pulls one of the. Uh, co, cords out too far and um, uses it in the vehicle that it wasn't uh. I can't remember whether it's a, whose, whose vehicle it is, but it's not supposed to be plugged into that particular vehicle and that happens sometimes. So. It's about twenty five hundred dollars that, that we spend each time and we have to do that. So. Uh, hopefully we won't have to do that. So we, we, I am expecting a phone call tomorrow from. The company that the town's dealing with. Uh, they said they'd give me a call tomorrow. We're gonna start working on that too.
Well, you prompted that conversation, I'm sure. Cause you could reach out.
Yeah, certainly. Can I just finish? So the electricity, um, just kind of go back. Well, one, can we just put a staff parking um, sign in front of the EV chargers? And then tow people? I mean, that's something that the board of ed could do, right? And just say that the, the EV chargers are for building staff only.
Well.
Or those parking spots are, whether they use.
I don't know. Somebody's gonna have to come up with a policy when we even, well, if we charge everybody, I'm good with that in my mind. I don't think anybody should get free electricity on us, whether it's.
But it, but it shouldn't be. Yeah, well, uh, agreed. But if we are gonna have to give it to people for free for a time, it would at least be nice to be.
Bore up to me. Electric vehicles here in town and use our, and, and then charge them at our station, but. I did hear that um, there were some school buses parked at. Uh, a Walmart EV charging station. Uh, in the area, charging their buses somewhere, but they didn't have labels on the side of the buses. So. Uh, it didn't say what town it was. They may have been on their way, they may have been on their way to be delivered somewhere and needed to be recharged. I don't know, but. Um, I did hear about that this morning.
Yeah.
We're talking about it.
Well, a short term, just like a staff parking only, because we are, we are losing a parking spot, especially at like the middle school. We need those parking spots. Um, so it seems like a, if people are all right with it, a staff parking only. At least that's something. If we, if we choose to enforce it or not, is something else. Uh, but at least that might. Do something so we have some more parking.
Adrian, is there any uh, feeling of support from the board that we? Pass a policy in our next, or just authorize and disconnect those until, for the time being, while we look into alternatives?
Well, I think we're getting on that to try to.
I'm gonna know something tomorrow.
That's moving forward.
I'm gonna know something good for you.
We'll hear about it.
It's been going on for two years now.
Well, alright, one more, one more follow through.
I thought if we were gonna do it, if we, it, for instance, if we were gonna shut them off at the end of the day or something, you were gonna allow staff to do it or, or. School vehicles to do it. That we put up a sign that says as of November or as of December first. Uh, these charging stations, we shut off between the hours of such and such and such and such or something like that. So you give them advance notice too, so that they can plan.
So this is, this is just another question um, on electricity or i, in specifically in energy audit. Um, and maybe with the older buildings, are there companies that do that for commercial spaces? That might be able to like, look at this and, and save, you know, obviously that will cost money to have done, but. Save us money in the long term. And is um, is it, i, is that something that you could just let us know that, yeah, if you guys are interested in that? And I, I don't know if we need to have. Like a general agreement on the board, or well, I don't know if we're allowed to have that, but is there any one that disagrees with just looking into it?
No, I would say that would be.
Like looking into what it would cost to have an energy audit done in some of the less efficient buildings to see if we can save electricity.
Sounds like a good project financing facilities committee.
Alright, I'm done now. Thank you.
I'd be Beverly and then Andrea.
No, you say Andrea and then, and then Beverly.
I'm not running the meeting. You got everything you're gonna get from me, Beverly. Sam, do not answer this question.
Okay.
I'm gonna ask it anyway, cause I know that there are, are people out there. Thinking of this too. I want you to just think about it and then come back and answer it some other time, okay? Whose wacky idea was it to putting rooms in buildings where you can't cut off? The, the, shut off the lights like that. That's my question. That's it. Don't answer it now. Don't answer it now.
Classroom lights you can shut off always.
Well, whatever. You know what I mean.
But I'm not answering the question.
No. Hey Beverly.
You're really, you're on.
Hey, 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 Sam, you're smart. Take the fifth on that one.
I should drink a fifth on that one.
Sam, at Lern, they just install charging stations and they charge the public one rate. And they charge the employees another rate. So that would be something to consider. And also, um, Sam, somebody told me over the weekend that a couple of the charging stations at Danes Viva Magnet School. Are not working. I don't know if you know that already or not.
I do know it, but I'm not fixing them at twenty five hundred dollars apiece until I know what we're gonna do.
Uh, okay, I understood, understood. But I would be in favor really of, of start charging for the user. At first I wasn't in favor of that, but now. With the cost of electricity going up, I definitely be in favor of that.
Well, and I'm glad the board, the town is considering it, cause I kind of feel like we need to do this one together. Did you, were you?
Yes, it's, it's really, it's real, yeah, but I talk a lot. With, when you present to the board tomorrow regarding Charles Barnum roof, I think when we originally went to them. We had mentioned that we are gonna do solar panels. I think when you were just presenting now. Maybe just like add that as a note that we're not doing the solar panels for summer.
They're going to ask me why it took so long to get here to ask for this permission to move forward on this project, but that is. That was a complicating factor because we went down that. Yeah, everybody uses that term. I hate to use those terms, but yeah, we went down that rabbit hole and then. When, when, when we found out what it was gonna cost and that we would have to bear the cost. As opposed to the way we do with PPA on the other, other projects.
Yeah.
Um, that, that's one. You all, we all decided that we'd skip this solar funnel. It could be done later. That was the way in, in, in going to them.
No, I just didn't want you to get.
I'll be sharing them with them.
And then the CIP, I know you just mentioned it, but was there an order of preference? Like if they were only gonna. Approve like X amount. Which ones you are putting for second.
Uh, both IT and um, the business office also have some uh, CIP projects. So we're gonna have to get together before we go to the planning commission with the, that, that's the first step is to go to the planning commission. And they're going to ask us what their preference or what the priorities are. So those three departments have to get together along with Susan. And Anne Marie is, oh, she's not Diana, uh, and Anne Marie and determine exactly what the priorities are. I think that.
I'll get you guys the worksheets that we're working on. We're kind of prioritizing each one. Munis is the only one that we have because we really would like to get that purchase this year so we can, it takes about eighteen. Munis is the only one that we have because we really would like to get that purchase this year so we can, it takes about eighteen months.
Yeah, the financing was probably number one.
And that's, that would align us with the town. And then the I T is really computers that we typically have used the D O D supplement funds, but may not be receiving those this next year. So we've got computers, we've got the munis, and then we have these facility enhancements.
Is the computers for the kids? Okay, does some of those are? Yeah, okay.
Yep, that's what it's for.
Thank you.
So, um, you just mentioned munis as a thing that, that as if it was going, that was already decided, as if that's what we're doing.
Well, that is the one that is aligned with the town. That's what.
But we haven't had the discussion as a board and we haven't had a vote.
Well, that's usually typically operations, but we can certainly do that. We had to, we had to send them in, but John Burt then looks at them and then decides what will be moving forward. So that is a process.
Yeah, I said that the planning commission is the first step, but actually it goes to John Burton. He actually decides whether it moves on to the planning commission is the next step, so.
Right, well, I guess I'm, I'm, I'm a little confused, um, because when we talked about the software during the budget cycle last year, we allocated the money to, to purchase something. We also discussed the idea that we would, you know, collect some information on that and various options. Pros and cons of different systems.
There's not that many systems out there. There's e-finance and munis, and I know that e-finance was not aligned as well as we wanted it to be. And we thought if we had the same system.
Process. And I thought that we wanted to have an inclusive process and a deliberative process on that.
So I think we'll put it on a, a board meeting to talk about that. I really was, you know, waiting for them to bring in to me what they were wanted for their C I P. So.
Who's them?
The business office, the tech, yeah, technology and then Sam's.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that. And I just, you know, again, just in the spirit of inclusiveness of the boards, you know, like we did express wanting to take a lead on that and have input and understanding of that. So as us moving forward, like I.
And that's what I thought I had heard you say, though. I thought I had heard you all say that you wanted something aligned to the town.
We were interested in that, but we also need to look at pros and cons because there are some other ideas about like, you know, do we want the open checkbook type approach where we can you know, have more accessibility as far as tracking expenditures? Uh, are we, do we like presentation models? You know, are there more certain softwares that are more conducive to one thing or another? And it was just a matter of like going through the process of, of, you know, looking at the, the four or five that are out there that do these things. And, you know, having, having a discussion on it and a vote.
Okay, well, Jay is on there. So Jay, did you hear that? And then I see Beverly has her hand raised.
Yeah, and I think it, I think there's two, two different um, tracks though. There's the system that interacts with the town that I think everybody agrees will be better than trying to manually enter those thousands of transactions. So that's something we need to look at. But budget presentation software is a totally different application. So I, I saw it as a two-track process.
Piece too.
So along those lines, and I think we do need to get just squared up and cleared, cleared for action on that as far as understanding exactly what we're talking about, what systems do what. You know, and, and what are we deciding? I mean, yeah, I, I could agree too that having something that dovetails nicely with the town or is what the town uses would save a lot, but we haven't had that discussion as a board, despite having had discussion about wanting to make a switch to something and that there need to be some infrastructures change in this, in, in the finance software. But it was my understanding that the board wanted to be included in that conversation and have a firm understanding or a better understanding of what programs do what for us and how. And then, you know, yeah, so maybe munis, maybe, and then the presentation thing would be another thing. But that, that's all, like, we haven't discussed that yet and we don't have a firm understanding over what programs do what and what we're committing to and what we can expect out of making that commitment.
Yep, I think that is a future agenda item.
And, you know, it sounds like there, there is an.
So we had to put down a number, so we did put that in. Doesn't mean that we can't change it. But we, we had a deadline today that we were up against, so.
So, uh, yeah.
Sooner than later. Beverly?
Yeah, I was just gonna say that, um, I, I'm on the same line as Jay was. I thought it was, I thought we wanted to align our software with the town and we wanted to go with munis. That's what I thought. I thought we already talked about that, but we didn't act on it, but we had that discussion. And then the presentation software for the budget was a whole different item that we didn't even talk about yet. But that's my um, recollection of the conversation.
We never had a meeting where we discussed that explicitly, nor do we ever have a meeting where we took official action on it. So that's what all I'm asking for is that, you know, we make it, make it real.
So we'll put it on a future.
And if there was a deadline for that, then we should have known that.
Well, we should have. I just came up against it too.
Right, so. Um, back to the C I P thing though, um, we're talking about Northeast Academy and the um, trying to create the uh, sense of urgency on that one. Do we have the numbers uh, as far as like how much extra electricity or an estimate? Not actual, I mean, it's gonna be hard to get the math, but some sort of estimate on how much it's costing the district and therefore the taxpayers to run the dual systems in order to compensate for the issue. Okay, so.
The business office usually shows that information and it typically runs. Isn't this system more a system that runs during the spring, summer and part of the fall? It doesn't run all year long, right?
That's right.
Either way, I, I think it would be um, beneficial to our argument to capture that evidence and present it, highlight it, post it note, put it on a billboard and attach some flashing lights to it.
How about a triplane carries a banner?
Yes, if they volunteer and give us that service fee because we're sending a lot of money on something that should have been fixed a while ago. Um, also, looking at the upcoming budget cycle and to follow on, on Matt's concern about the uh, the schedule of replacement of vehicles, um, I think it would be beneficial for the board to be able to see a projection of like, what could we do, what would it look like mathematically to get back on schedule? And like, how could we do it in a way that is not gonna create a huge spike in the budget, but you know, maybe just, just a ramp and then a, a plateau of a steady state? Um, to get back to whatever the schedule was before is disrupted.
Yeah, it's not a big spike. It's adding one vehicle per year.
Okay. That'd be great. And then, then that'd be another thing for the budget, you know, like to, to really like, let's amplify that. That's what we're doing and that's what we're defending when we go to defend our budget.
Yeah, we had intended to put it, to submit it in the budget this year.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
I know I see a lot of staff members on waiting to, to share some of the things that are coming later on, so.
Jay, could we uh?
Committee reports at this point.
I was wondering, Jay, what you would think about uh, re-changing the order so we could do the new business and let some of the staff go home and then come back to the committee reports and action items. Would that work for you?
Uh, if there's no objection.
Um, I don't object to that at all.
Okay.
So I've, I've often thought we should do it this way permanently, um, because we do get so bogged down in all of the things while we have people waiting. Uh, it's been now almost three hours that they've been waiting. I will entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second Beverly.
Okay, and uh, any discussion? Points of clarification about the special meeting minutes?
Uh, no.
Done one, like how would I vote there? Do I just like stay for the whole thing? Yeah, cuz every time I'm not there.
Wait, so all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, any opposed? Abstentions? That carries. Uh, Jen, would you be willing to read the motion uh, for item number one?
Number one, okay, um, motion to approve policy two, five, one, four, five, dot, five, three, transgender and gender non-conforming youth as a first reading.
Do I hear a second?
Second, Thomas.
They're moved by Jen, seconded by uh, Ian. Any discussion?
The policy, the twenty-eighteen policy needs amendments to comply with amended federal regulations. And I was hoping that Denise, Susan might provide a abbreviated briefing.
Denise is on and she actually has a suggestion for changing that non-conforming to something that might be a little better. You, you're muted.
Thank you. Good evening, um, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Um, one of the suggestions that I had in terms of um, changing the language from gender non-conforming uh, would be potentially gender diverse. Um, so that is one suggestion. Um, so we could change the policy to um, gender diverse youth um, to address the concerns with the non-conforming um, verbiage. And then uh, I just wanted to share with the board that the reason why this policy is coming before the board is because in um, twenty-twenty-four, uh, after January twenty-twenty-four, the state reissued their guidance for school districts in terms of um, policies for students who are transgender. And actually, their policy, now that I notice it, is for gender diverse students.
Oh, good.
So that might be something that we, we want to adopt for our, the name of our policy. Um, so you may or may not recall that the previous, the old policy um, allowed students um, to request a change to, an official change to their record to um, change their name and or gender based on uh, transgender you know, issues or experiences they were having. Um, it was a very confusing policy to follow because um, the parents were not um, active uh, participants in those decisions. Um, so what the State Department of Education has done is they revised the policy to make it um, in line with F R P A, the Family and Educational Rights Act. So that at this time, only parents and guardians and students over eighteen can request a name and gender change for official school records. Um, obviously, um, we would abide by the student's desire to be called or identified by a particular name if the parent did not consent. Uh, however, um, only a parent guardian or student over eighteen can make an official change to the record. And again, this brings the guidance in line with F R P A because any change to an official student record does require parent guardian uh, permission. So the policy brings uh, the district in line with the current guidelines from the State Department of Education that were issued last uh, winter.
Any discussion?
Um, I'll just say a thank you, uh, Denise, for um, offering that term. I think uh, I, I'd be in favor in that. It, it's, it's a positive term. It's an affirming term, not a denying term. Um, so there's more of a positive.
Would you like to make a friendly amendment?
Yes, uh, and just a quick follow though on the general description of the thing, um, the policy change. I, I believe it, it provides a fair, firm and consistent approach. To, to kind of clear up a lot of uh, possible confusion. So I'm in favor of the policy change. And I would like to make a friendly amendment that we uh, wherever it says non-conforming in the document, we uh, change the wording to di- gender diverse.
I second that.
I accept that too. Uh, Susan, the, the regulations which you're responsible for also contains.
Yes, we'll fix that too, yeah.
Okay, is there any other discussion?
Oh, uh, Mike Whitney has his hand up.
Mike?
Thank you. Um, actually, uh, I heard we're uh, moved an amendment and seconded, but this is a first reading. Is that our procedure? Or are we just getting, feeding, giving input? That's my first question.
Oh, that's a good one.
But can we send it back to policy um, for the rewording?
But, but do we have to vote on, on that? Because it seems like it's pretty clear.
I recall we generally, we've always voted on first readings.
Uh, yeah, it was passed as a first reading would be how.
And then if there were any other changes, we'd bring it back.
Got, okay. Okay, then I have a couple of questions. Actually, I thank, thank you already for um, the input and a very quick response to uh, citizens' comments. But that, it did bring up uh, the thought that, you know, where so many people sitting around here and have already made a, a substantive change in the language. I'd like this uh, to be passed through the D E I. I think it's a task force or committee uh, the school system. And then at least um, at the high school level, um, um, I think it's a spectrum club. Uh, and, and have them see because um, they'll, but quite naturally be more attuned to these issues and might pick up some of the, the, the language that uh, we might not highlight as uh, potentially being an issue, but they might find more inclusive ways of saying that. And, and then I have um, just a couple of questions. I didn't see anywhere said anything about uh, I saw Power School and I saw official records. What about email address? Cuz I'm pretty sure the format is something like first name, middle initial, part of your last name. And um, can, can the students get the, do they get new email address? Um, I don't see it covered anywhere or an alias. It, it's, it seems missing even in the included form.
It's usually the first initial of their first name, their last name, and then at that grahan dot K twelve dot C T dot U S.
Okay. But, but um, but doesn't it come up? Doesn't the actual name come up along with it? I, I feel, I feel like when the email address goes in there, the student's name shows too. That would change.
Yeah, a certain number of characters in the name um, is in the email. So if there's an official change to the record, it would change the email as well.
But if it's just a, a choice for this child, I would think the email would remain the same.
If it's just a nickname, right. If, if the official record is not changing and we're adding a nickname, um, that does not require parent permission, so the email would stay the same.
Preferred name, right? Did we call this? Bird name.
Okay, um, my, I, I guess it probably should be talked about somewhere in there, what, whatever happens. And then um, uh, restroom accessibility. I saw uh, should be provide access to a single user room, which is not unchanged from last time. Um, but my question is, um, do all the schools have that? E- even the high school? Cuz I heard those were last year. I don't, I don't believe they're currently open.
Um, they all have gender neutral bathrooms.
But that are currently open? Cuz I, I heard at Fitch, those were closed for reasons, I, I guess, related to substance abuse, maybe?
I hadn't heard that. Um, I can check into that though, Mike.
Okay.
Yeah, I hadn't either.
Even the nurse's office has gender neutral rooms.
Right, but the kind that you could just get a pass and go to like normal. Um, and then the other question is, on the last part, we had professional. Um, and then the other question is, on the last part, we have professional development that provides for training. Um, is there training? And, and how often does that happen?
Uh, there is training. Um, there's training in terms of, uh, we've, we've trained the administrators. Um, last year, we reviewed the pol- the, um, the new regulations from the state at an administrative meeting. And then we reviewed it again at the beginning of this school year with the forms so that the administrators and the school counselors and the mental health staff are familiar uh, with walking students through the form and what their options would be.
Gotcha.
Of, in terms of submitting the form, because there are some sections in Power School, um, where, uh, you know, if, if they do the nickname in particular, where their legal name would still, um, be apparent, and I think that's in the grading module in the gradebook. So, uh, we have, you know, we have had speakers come in and work with our administrators and our, we've invited our mental health staff to join those trainings because many times, um, you know, students are at varying stages in terms of discussions they've had with their parents. And, uh, we want our counselors and our mental health staff to be able to help students navigate some of these discussions that may be uncomfortable and difficult for them to have with their families.
Right, thank you. I was also thinking of teacher training, like, um, in terms of, uh, student pron- preferred pronouns. Um, and even as we're seeing here, our very policy has, uh, had his or her, I'm, I'll bet that pops up here and there in PowerPoint slides, um, materials that the, the teachers are presenting and, you know, uh, over, over time, uh, updating that language to be very important to have people, um, have a sense of place. Uh, and then I think that was it. I'm just going to flip through the pages, make sure I didn't miss one. Oh, yeah, uh, we have the, I appreciate the, the list of definitions, but I just asked the policy committee at some point to check, make sure all those definitions that they give are actually used in the rest of the policy because you probably will, don't want them if they're not referred to.
Could I, could I respond, uh, Mike?
Yeah.
Uh, the way I understand things to be organized is the board is responsible for designing the policy. The regulations are structurally, uh, creatures of the administration, which they discuss with the policy committee as a matter of courtesy. Uh, I, I have no problem responding, you know, gladly will look at that over again if that's the desire of the committee. But I just wanted to let you know in terms of the structure, we, we, we did not prepare or go over the regulations with the same fine tooth comb with which we did the policy.
Oh, okay, well, I, I'm not on the policy committee, but I, I'd just like to say that, you know, that's right in our board policy, that those Rs are right there along with it. So I think we have every bit as much ownership of, of the Rs as we do the Ps.
I would, I would, in being inclined to agree with, uh, with Mike, we've had this conversation on other issues. And I do believe, you know, the policy committee does have that authority as well to lean in on the writing of the Rs, how they're implemented. And, you know, we obviously take, you know, a, a good bit of direction and suggestion from the administration. But at the end of the day, it's our responsibility as a board.
So, as, as chair, I would have a, a dual response. First of all, personally, I think that's a great discussion for the board to have as a separate agenda item rather than consider that for this evening.
Right.
Uh, I would also probably want to get in touch with the CAE and ask them their understanding, the differentiation between policy and regulations from a statutory point of view, because it's above my pay grade. I can't answer that.
Agreed. And yes, I've, I've seen some of the CAE recommend, recommended, uh, examples of policies that have Rs as well.
Right, we usually try to get that for you when it comes like that. Um, because for the consistency, that it's aligned, you know?
Yeah.
We got some more recommendations today, which I'll be forwarding to you guys.
Right.
Can I see Beverly? Her hand is raised.
Yeah, thank you, Susan. Just to piggyback on Mike's comment, and I know it's on the regulation. When you say district staff, I would definitely be in favor of teachers, um, getting the training too, not just the administrators, because the teachers are with the students all the time. So if anybody got this training, it should be the teachers, in my opinion. So I would like you to reach out and maybe train the teachers also, and, and, because it says district staff and transgender sensitivity. And the teachers can use that. There's no doubt that the teachers can use that too.
We have offered that training before to our staff, our teachers. But it is, I think it's timely now with this new legislation to revisit it again. It's one of those things that really needs to be done periodically, you know, for people.
Yeah, maybe, um, every two years you need to do it, or definitely with new staff members when they come into our school system.
Right.
I have a question.
C D.
I didn't figure I would weigh in on this for many reasons. Um, there's a reference, since we're talking about the Rs, there's a reference in here. And I'm not, you know, proposing this as an amendment or anything like that, but consideration whoever looks over the Rs. On the form itself, it says stated gender, no change, male, female, non-binary. Doesn't non-binary strike you as somehow negative? In other words, the non-binary, there's binary and non-binary. Immediately, the binary is built. If I'm non-binary, why do I want my reference point to be, well, there's those people, and then there's me? So why, why is male, female the center of the universe there? So there should be some other term. I would propose they do away with all these terms.
That's fascinating conversation.
Oh, yes, it is.
I still want to be close on that.
I would like to hold lots of things.
But, yeah, non-binary, then.
Not late for.
That does seem, if there's, if those are, there are alternatives to that. Seems like something we should look at.
We could use gender diverse again.
Yeah.
Right, and that circles back to something I, I, that Mike said earlier that I think we, as a policy committee, should consider as well, is how do we incorporate the DEI clubs and the Spectrum Club in this to get like on-the-ground perspectives as to like what is preferred? Now, from the population that it impacts the most.
Could, could we, Jay, as a matter of authority, pass the first reading with a request to the administration to, uh, get the input of both DEI and Spectrum?
Uh, I would say yes. I mean, I think that's the beauty of putting these through multiple readings. And again, even if we pass the first reading, as we all know, um, it, it can come back with any number of changes, um, for the second reading. It doesn't, you know, have to, it doesn't have to pass exactly with the same wording twice.
Right.
I like the idea of empowering the students as much as we possibly can so they take part in the real world with us.
Agreed, we're just guessing. But we're, the intent is clear, and I think now that we, you know, agreed in the intent, so to speak, it seems like there's consensus in the intent. Let's make the inclusion.
Do we have enough consensus to vote for this evening and move on to the next, the next seventeen things?
Yeah, I'd be in favor of that myself.
Me, too.
Jake. First reading of the, uh, policy, P fifty-one forty-five dot fifty-three, as amended to change all references to nonconfor- of setting nonconformity to diverse for a first reading with the request of the administration, uh, send those through channels to the DEI General Committee? I guess it's the, not the subcommittee, the DEI Committee plus Spectrum. Is that the name of the group? Okay.
Point of order? I don't think we were voted on the amendment.
What?
I don't think we voted on the amendment.
Well, you know, I think you're absolutely right, Counselor.
There was a motion, there was a second, but I don't recall that it was a vote.
No, we had a friendly amend, we had a friendly, uh, amendment, but it's never voted on.
Um.
Right. Yeah, I was, I was trying to, to get us reoriented here. Um, are you attempting to create another amendment to send it to DEI? Or are you comfortable that we have?
Um, I, I would like the opportunity to rephrase my friendly amendment.
Okay.
Uh, the friendly amendment is that we would change, uh, all mentions of the term noncon- gender nonconforming to gender diverse or whatever term is, uh, put forth by after, or whatever term is determined uh, to be the preferred term after consultation with the DI Committee and the Spectrum Club.
Or what the board considers to be the, we want their input, but I think the responsibility for deciding is ours.
As determined by the board after consultation with.
Yeah.
I'm glad we video this so we can get this right.
Yes.
Yeah, Gore, Gore Jones is going to have to put this into writing. All right, so do we have a second on the amendment?
I second it, but I have a quick question.
Okay, yeah, now we're open to, uh, dis- discussion.
Susan, how often do these, um, committees meet? Because when can we expect to get a response?
Um, well, I think the DEI has a meeting coming up in November. And I will find out about the Spectrum Club. I feel like the clubs meet, if not every week, at least a couple of times in a month, so I'll find out.
I'm sure they have a special meeting if they're invited.
And, and I think they would meet with us if we just set it up for them.
Yeah.
So.
Okay, and you'll send the, uh, the, uh, policy to the DI, DEI Committee before they meet so they have read it and they can discuss it. Okay, thank you.
Is there any other discussion on the amendment?
To attend the Spectrum meeting.
Hearing none, all those in favor of the amendment, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Abstentions?
One abstention.
Dean abstains. All right. And, uh, so now we're back to the main motion as amended. Is there any further discussion on the main motion as amended? If not, all those in favor to approve policy P five-one four-five-point-five-three, uh, transgender and gender diverse youth as a first reading as amended, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? Abstentions?
One abstention.
Dean abstains. All right. Thank you very much. And I hope we can bring that back to the next meeting. Um, Matt, would you like to read the motion for item number two?
I've been reading with bated breath. I move, we approve policy P forty-one fifteen-point-three, evaluation of coaches as a first reading.
Do I hear a second?
Second, Thomas.
Yep.
So, all right, the purpose of this, uh, this motion is to establish a policy, activity coaches would be now evaluated as are other district employees who provide education-facing services to our students. Susan, would you like to discuss this?
Well, we, we have been evaluating coaches, but this is definitely putting it into policy. And, um, we had Mark Romano, who came and spoke with us about the importance of evaluating coaches, just like we evaluate teachers and staff. So, um, you know, we went through it and he explained it, and, you know, I think it's ready to go. It is something that they're already doing and practicing.
So this includes, uh, uh, non-certified staff as well?
Yes, but any coaches, they could be certified teachers, they could be teachers in other districts, they could be non-certified staff and their coaching.
And, and somebody who just, you know, works in a store.
Right, right. And likes to be with kids and.
I have a question, too. Let's say the students set up a stamp, stamp collecting club. And there's no faculty advisor, but they find somebody in the community who serves as an advisor. Is that considered a coach that would fall under this?
That's a good question. I don't think so. I don't think that, I think these are really for sports and athletics through the CIAC.
Okay.
Yeah, because the policy says personnel certified.
Oh, it does, okay.
Yeah.
All right, is there any other discussion?
Yeah, just a quick question. I, I don't have the policy in front of me right now, but I think it's included intramural, too?
Mike, I think it includes all certified, um, coaches. If they're certified, that this is what this policy covers. So if they're intramural but certified, I think the policy covers them.
Personnel certified, it's under personnel certified.
Right.
So, answering Andrew's question, it should not include.
I don't see how it could.
So would the mayor's husband who helps coach baseball be a certified coach? Where's he at?
What constitutes a certified coach?
Or?
Yeah, what's, what's the certification?
So it, it would fall under certified, um, like the certified teacher.
Are coaches required to be certified at a certain level?
I think we need to take this back and discuss it some more.
So I wish I had asked Mark Romano to come.
Yeah.
Well, he'll be here next month with us.
What's a teacher certification? What's it, like, it's O ninety-four if it is for you. L ninety-three, two is for me.
Pass it first reading.
I, I had one more question.
Many.
Go ahead, Mike. Yeah, the second to last paragraph, it's a lengthy one. It has to do with, uh, board termination or non-renewal. Um, I couldn't quite follow through sort of the flow chart of this policy, how it would get up to the board level, because it seemed to me this be in the purview often of the athletic director.
So would you guys feel comfortable with passing it as a first reading with the understanding that we're going to go back over it? And we'll invite Mark to come to the meeting. Uh, the question Mike asked is a great question, because I don't think we board hiros or fires anybody except you.
Isn't this one of those, uh, issues where people use board and district interchangeably? It's like the that maybe this should be district. So I definitely think this, this should go back for some reconsideration.
And in that case, I'm not inclined to vote in favor of a first read pass.
Okay, we'll just take it up again next month.
Yeah, I'll take it back.
So can we, uh, get a motion to table this, to, to table discussion of? Um, we've made a motion, it's been seconded, so can we have a motion to table until the next meeting?
Withdraw the motion, right?
Withdraw, withdraw the motion?
Draw a motion.
Yes.
I withdraw my motion.
I withdraw my second.
Okay, so that, that will go back.
All right.
All right, um, Ian, would you like to read the motion for item, uh, number three?
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you said Ian.
I thought you said Dean.
No, I'm sorry, I was, uh, I, I did say Ian, I apologize. I'm going, I'm trying to go in order, then Dean will read the next one.
Maybe, maybe the last name is for the two of us.
Yeah.
Um. All right, number three, you said?
Uh, please.
We'll make a motion to approve policy P five-one four-five-point-five slash four-one-one-eight-point-one-one-two, prohibition of sex discrimination, sex-based harassment as a first reading.
Do I hear a second?
Oops, sorry.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Adrian.
Adrian, okay. And would you like to discuss?
In May, the US Department of Education revived its Title IX Sex Discrimination and Sex-Based Harassment Regulations. This draft, if approved, would bring us into, in line with the amended and current Connecticut and US compliance.
And we do have Denise Doolittle on. Um, again, new le- Again, new legislation and everything, including regulations, I think we had captured from CAPE. And, and the forms, I think we adjusted as well. Some of them I think we might have had.
Thank you, Susan. So some of the major changes in the August twenty twenty-four regulations from the federal government that Connecticut has adopted are that the term sexual harassment has been replaced with the term sex discrimination. The new regulations include students who are pregnant. They also include accommodations for, for pregnant students such as lactation rooms and other accommodations for their pregnancy. They also, the wording is changed in terms of hostile environment and the definition of, of sex-based discrimination. We used to have to indicate that the, the harassment was severe and persuasive. The new terminology is severe or persuasive. So it kind of lowers the standard a little bit. It also changes the, the roles and responsibilities of the staff who investigate and respond to complaints of sex-based discrimination. We used to have very discreet roles in terms of an investigator of the complaint and then a decision maker, and they had to be two different people in the district. That has now been changed. So again, there's more flexibility. The investigator could also be the decision maker. The regulations continue supportive measures for both the complainant and the respondent. They also, there is a bit of a change in terms of the evidence that is provided during the course of the investigation. Under the previous policy and regulations, both the respondent and the complainant were entitled to have copies of the evidence. The new regulations just provide access. So that's a bit of a, a change. Trying to see if there's anything else. You know, a complaint can be oral. There's no requirement that it be in writing. And there is a responsibility of the district, if we're aware of sex-based discrimination, that the district would file a complaint and the district would initiate an investigation. Another minor change is we used to have a form for a formal report and a form for informal report. Again, the new regulations streamline the process and we only have one report. We can investigate it and resolve it informally through restorative measures. Or depending on the nature and severity of the complaint, we can conduct a formal investigation. But under both scenarios, we would provide what's called supportive measures, which are steps to allow both the respondent and the complainant to feel comfortable coming to school while the complaint is being investigated. I think those are the main differences between the old regulations and the new ones.
I see Mike Whitney's hand is up.
Sorry, that was a rollick hand.
Oh, sorry.
There is annual training that's required and we do, I did forget that, we do have annual training. All administrators will be trained by our, one of our attorneys, Rebecca, from the Birch and Moses firm on November twenty-first. And then we have an online training module that's about fifty minutes that we will schedule on a teaching and learning day for all of the staff to take. Any questions?
Any other discussion?
I have a, just a quick clarification. One of the first changes you mentioned, you said something about a verbal complaint versus a written complaint? Could you just restate that?
Oh, sure. So a complaint doesn't have to be in writing in order for the district to accept it and determine if it will be investigated. Oral reports are acceptable as well.
Are, are the oral reports documented by the person receiving the complaint?
Yes, they would be documented by the administrator or myself as the district Title IX Coordinator.
And then the complainant would basically just assign like an affidavit that, you know, that the, the report was accurate?
Probably wouldn't be an affidavit, but we would look to get more information about the complaint when we conduct, if we conduct the investigation and we meet with the complainant to get more information.
Right, that's, I guess what I'm trying to capture, where in the moment does the verbal become written or documented and memorialized in a way that is verified by the complainant? Has to be like a fair representation of their complaint.
Sure, so what I've generally done in the past is just summarize what the complainant has shared with me in the written report. So I've summarized it in writing and then I've submitted the report as the district Title IX Coordinator.
Right, no, I, I, I get that. I guess where does the complainant get to say, yes, that's a fair representation of my complaint?
Well, I generally don't change the summary or the complaint that's being shared with me, so it's pretty much similar to what's being shared with me and then we talk about it a little bit more during the interview process.
So your summary, does the summary, does the complaint get to review your summary?
Oh, certainly if they like to, absolutely. But if they're, if, if they don't, if they don't want to put it in writing, then we would summarize the complaint and put it in writing.
Right, but yeah, so, so say they don't want to put it in writing, they give you the verbal complaint. You summarize it. Would they, would you just proceed without checking in with them?
No, she interviews and then they discuss it.
All right, so before the summary's like officially put into a report and action is taken, moved forward.
Right.
The complaint has a chance to review the summary and affirmatively agree that, that, that's a fair representation.
And add anything else that they think is pertinent.
Okay.
I mean, that's really why you do the interview, you're really checking to make sure you summarized it correctly and you're also making sure you've captured
So that happens.
Evidence and documentation.
The interview is the verification process.
It is.
Okay, that's, that's all I need to know. Thank you.
I guess Ian is raising a good point because if somebody is aggrieved after a decision is ma-made and they say that's not really what I said or not what I really meant, there's no way for the investigator or for, or for Denise to say, well, well, yes, we showed it to you and you concurred that it was, that what we wrote down initially was, was what you said. And if you're aggrieved with that decision, well, you're aggrieved with that decision, but we didn't base the investigation on anything more or less than what you said. Even just initialing the bottom of it that you're in agreement, we're having a note. I've read this and it fairly reflects my complaint.
Right, I guess the sequence of events, as I understood it, was the summary was a preliminary summary, then you had the interview afterwards. As the investigation.
My concern is, I, I'm sure we will protect the students and not worry about that. I want to be sure that we protect the district as well from somebody who wants to be malicious.
I just want to make sure we have a fair, firm and consistent process.
Yeah.
What do you think, Denise?
Well, I, I think that when a student comes forward with an oral report, I, I think that we act in the role as advocates for the student, so we're trying to support the student. Sometimes these are difficult conversations for students to have and they're very uncomfortable. So my role is to support them and let them know that we're here, you know, first of all, to make sure that whatever bullying or harassment is happening is addressed in a expedient way and, and ends because we want the students to feel comfortable coming to school. And we want them to be able to benefit from their educational program. So the report really is just a very general overview of the complaint that is shared with us. And then we get into more of the specifics when we interview, you know, both students and oftentimes they will share with us witnesses. So the witnesses are interviewed, they're able to bring forth evidence, whether it's text messages or screenshots. You know, it, it's a very thorough process, so it does start out a little bit more general. Because we're just kind of getting a student's, you know, concerns. But it becomes very specific as the investigation ensues. And both sides have opportunity to review the evidence that others, that the other side shares. There's a waiting period that they have to, to review the evidence. And then there's time that they have to come back with a rebuttal or evidence, you know, that they'd like us to review that may give additional information. So it is a very thorough process. Parents are involved throughout the process. Students are allowed to bring in individuals that, you know, that, that they feel would support them. You know, parents, mentors, advocates. So it, it is a very comprehensive process, but we try to treat both sides equally. No, no punitive measures are decided upon for the alleged, you know, perpetrator until the process is completed and a final decision has been made. And there is an appeal process as well.
So I guess, I guess my only concern and my only suggestion or area of consideration would be to, when you're taking the report, it should be part of the practice, like that initial summary as you memorialize it into words, if it's a oral, if it's a verbal report, a verbal complaint, and as you're, you know, transposing that into a written document, a summary, I think it would be beneficial for the district. And, you know, and from, and, and for the complainant and for all parties involved to have the complainant sign off on the summary saying, that's a fair representation of what I came in here and said. Thank you for.
They're not required to. Legally, they're not required to. We can ask them to, but they're not required. We, we have a standard called deliberate indifference. So if we're aware of potential sex-based discrimination, whether the complainant signs off on it or not, the district is responsible for investigating it. Otherwise, we could be determined to be deliberately indifferent.
Right, I guess, yeah, I, I don't know, I mean, I would defer to, to the legal minds on this one, I, I don't know, just, it, that's a, this is a big jump from, you know, verbal to, to, to written word and then like the report triggers the rest of the motion, rest of the action afterwards. And if the verbal complaint is not rendered in such a way that the complainant's comfortable with, I, I don't know, I mean.
Is it in the same vein as being a mandated reporter? When it comes to a DCF matter?
Yeah, I think, I think that's a, yeah, I think that, I think that's.
If we get information like this.
Yeah, and it doesn't, it doesn't mean that we're going to conduct a formal investigation. The complainant may choose to have the complaint resolved informally. It could also be dismissed. We could document the complaint, get more information and dismiss it. But we are required to, to look into any behavior that could be, you know, sex-based discrimination.
Hey Denise?
Yes.
Whether the complaint comes in, in writing or orally, are you still reducing it to the Form A, which is attached to the policy?
Is that the formal complaint form?
Yes, so would, would everything go on there?
Yes, it would.
And a, a, at the end of which it says, I hereby certify the information provided in this complaint is true, correct and complete to the best of my knowledge and belief. And by signing below, I request an investigation determination occurring in accordance with the district sex discrimination, sex-based harassment board policy, insert number and its regulations. So even if it comes in verbally, you're going to reduce it to this form and at least ask them to sign it.
Correct, and if they're uncomfortable, we, I sign it in as submitting the complaint, yes.
The only suggestion I might have, but of course I'm not an attorney, so I'll defer to, to Floyd. Should there be a line for a witness? Because we have the complainant and then we have the received by.
Right, right. Usually, yeah, usually the received by is kind of like a quasi-witness.
But I'm just saying to protect you.
Right, right. No, that's a good point. We can certainly find out about that.
All right, thank you.
Jay?
Yes.
Be the record, I've got a couple of questions. The first thing that struck me was, all this is in green and it's, it's a topic that surely we have a prior policy on. So is this replacing, do we have an existing policy on this that we're replacing?
Yes.
Or is this, we have a policy A for events taking place before a certain date and this new policy for events taking place after a certain date?
Yes, the date is August first.
So there, so there is another policy? Okay. And I was going to ask, you know, why do we have to codify what's already codified, but I, I get the, the importance. My, and Denise, when you mentioned something, so sort of the way you phrased it led me to, to, you know, sort of boost my concern. I don't think you meant it this way. But I was reminded of the phrase you hear sometimes, you know, give them a fair trial, then hang them. You know, somebody comes to you with a complaint and then the goal is to make sure that, you know, the behavior doesn't happen again. That sort of presumes that, that what the person complained about was actually true. And so that's, that's, I'm sort of concerned about, again, mixing the investigation with the decision-making. I realize the new rule provides flexibility and you're going to have one of the same person or, or body of people do, you know, do, sort of do everything. But, you know, it could be prosecutor, judge, jury, all in one. The one that really stands out to me though is the burden of proof. And again, this is in the, you know, the R section, but I'm going to mention it. And if it's in the law, it doesn't matter to me at all, I'll, I'll buck Congress if I have to. But I, I am, I personally am not comfortable with the preponderance of the evidence standard. I know why that's there. The preponderance of the evidence is basically fifty percent on a feather. And I know this is not a criminal proceeding, so it doesn't have to be beyond a reasonable doubt. There is an intermediate, you know, because we're talking about potentially either expelling the student or terminating the employment of an employee on the basis of fifty percent plus a feather, so to speak. It's something called a clear and convincing standard, which is above that, but well below the, you know, beyond reasonable doubt, you see in criminal, criminal cases. So for example, if you wanted to, you wanted a court, probably court had to find somebody that was cognitively impaired and therefore should be concerned to some degree, that standard is clear and convincing. Because you're taking away some or all of their liberty. So again, the law probably, I'm guessing, it's not my field, law probably requires that, you know, that the standard be the lower one, the preponderance of the evidence. But I, I'll comment, I don't say personally, I think that's a little low when somebody's job and subsequent reputation may be on the line and the investigators and the decision-makers are all, are all the same.
Um, so the, the state of Connecticut does recommend that districts use the preponderance of evidence standard. And that is in line with some of our other policies that use the preponderance of evidence standard.
Right, I'm, I'm sure, I'm sure the policies are right for that and in certain other places, I think I have the same problem. Anyway, thank you.
We have a couple other staff members online too, so keep in mind.
Other discussion, again, this is a first reading and if anyone has any concerns, they can certainly submit them to the policy committee for any tweaking in the interim.
I'm prepared to vote. And I, I could take my concerns to the policy committee. And I I could take my concerns to the policy committee.
All right, so all those in favor of a first reading to approve policy P five one four five point five slash four one one eight point one one two prohibition of sex discrimination, sex-based harassment is a first reading. Please indicate by saying aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions?
I'm abstaining till I, till I go deeper.
So Dean abstains. All right. Dean, would you be willing to read the motion for item number four?
Sure, to approve, I move to approve Yukon E-Ci eleven hundred Introduction to Special Education Curriculum.
Do I hear a second?
Second, Thomas.
And would someone like to present on this before we discuss?
Would someone like to present on this? I'm looking, well, see Amy McKenna looks like here and Stacy Noriko. They're both here.
Well, if I could say before we if, if I could say before we move on. The curriculum committee met with the teachers of various courses that have been proposed. The one for econ, uh, for E, E C, the has been, we, we approved the writing of the curriculum. And then it will be brought to you in, in the, in.
This one was completed.
Well, that's, that's correct. And we approved for, yes, I'm sorry, to come to you tonight to be So having said that, that it came before the curriculum committee and we said aye. Here, here they are. And I would, I, I don't know, who do you think would be better to, to explain it, Amy or Stacy?
Well, Stacy wrote it.
That's what I think.
Would you like to say something about the curriculum?
Amy's having difficulty accessing her microphone. I don't know if Stacy can access hers.
I don't know if I see Stacy's still on.
I don't see it.
I, I think it came from.
Can I ask a quick question before, you know, while you're waiting for the people to come on? To, I think Adrian and Andrea on that committee. Why did you, why did, why was this course chosen? Out of all the courses you can choose, why did you choose, why did they choose to bring this curriculum forward?
It's the ECE from the curriculum, actually from Yukon.
And it also goes with the education pathway. We're trying to grow our own. So there's several courses. There's a, you know, the Ed Rising course, which is like the original. And there's other courses that we're lining up so that a student who may want to be a teacher someday or work with students will be able to have several different courses as part of their career pathway. And hopefully would go off to school and maybe someday want to come back and teach for Groton Public Schools. So the growing your own in our district is one way that we can achieve a more diverse group of students when our own come back.
So you think this course is beneficial to most of our students?
Right. I think any teacher, as you know, Beverly is a teacher, we all need a background, no matter what we're teaching in special education. And that along with the unified sports programs, unified art, all those programs really give kids an experience of working side by side with kids with special needs. Though, there, we have several different ways to create a pathway with education.
Unified music will also come forward, but that curriculum hasn't, hasn't been written yet. This one has been, I, I don't think Stacy's ready. I think it's received from Yukon.
Yeah, but she lined it up on our curriculum map. So it did come from Yukon. But then we put it on the, she put it on the curriculum map, which you have included in the package.
Uh, so Amy's microphone is available now. Maybe she could speak to it. I do believe Stacy did log off. It is getting quite late and these folks all have to get up early in the morning. So I don't, I don't blame them for not staying on. Would, Amy, would you like to say something about it?
Yeah, sure. I'd be happy to. You can hear me, right Jay?
Yes.
Yeah, all right. Thanks. Good evening, everybody. I'm glad that you're still here to listen about our curriculum. So this, you know, what, what Susan mentioned, this does expand our education pathway. We have currently one course, it's called Yukon Ed Rising. The course nearly tripled in size from last year to this year. And Mrs. Norika, Stacy did work with Yukon to map this course to the Groton Public Schools curriculum document. It was approved by the curriculum committee just last week. And what we're trying to do is expand the pathway for students that would like to study education at the college level and hopefully you know, eventually return to Groton and perhaps other Connecticut public schools as teachers. So part of this is kind of an initiative to, to really focus in on creating that pathway for students that are interested, at least at this point in their young lives, in going into teaching. As you know, this, this curriculum was written by a teacher that has been a Groton Public Schools educator for many years. She's a well-respected special education teacher as well as advisor to best buddies, former coach of Unified Sports. So we're, we're kind of really excited that this teacher took the initiative to, to write this curriculum, remap it from Yukon for the Groton Public Schools template and present this really exciting and informative course to our students.
Okay, thank you, Amy. Are there any other questions?
Jen has a question.
Go ahead, Jen.
Amy, um, two questions. How do you how, how do you make the connection that students will come back to teach in our district by offering this one course? And then as like a college level course, would, do you see most undergraduate institutions like, like validating and taking this so that the students can get like the three or four credits possibly associated with this?
Sure. Well, obviously the first question, we hope that they return. We hope that they return. Taking this course certainly isn't a guarantee. But I know that Groton is, does have a grow your own program that they're very proud of. So I just thought I would mention that. But in terms of them being able to use this course for other college credit, this is a Yukon class, so it's dual enrollment. So a student that takes this course at Fitch can earn their Yukon credits and those will be transferable credits, not just for Yukon, but for most American colleges and universities, depending on how they score. You know, i- in the course and whether or not the university they go to will accept the credits. Currently, I think Yukon's rate for credit transfer acceptance is at about eighty-seven percent.
Even though it's like one of their own, sort of?
It just means that the student that takes this course at Fitch will have a Yukon transcript. So if they do not go to Yukon, other colleges and universities will also accept that credit. And that is the rate that is at eighty-seven percent. The student that matriculates into Yukon after graduating from Fitch will definitely be able to carry their Yukon credits over to Yukon with no questions asked. That's what early college experience classes will do for them.
Okay. And this is one of those like core classes that like a teacher, young teacher or someone aspiring to be a teacher? This would be like one of their core classes?
I mean, I think so. I think Stacy might be a better person to answer that question. But most of us that are in the field of education were required to take something akin to Introduction to Special Education, History of Education and Various Methods classes. So I'm I, I don't want to be incorrect in assuming that EPSY eleven hundred is one of those sort of required courses at Yukon, but I do think that's information that we could easily find out.
Yeah, no, I'm just asking just to make sure that like a student because usually these classes, right, would take extra time and stuff and then want to make sure that they get the value or the credit for it. Not just at Yukon, but like you said, like other universities too. And that it's not just gonna be treated as like an elective for them, or it possibly could be an elective, but I just wanted, just make sure that their time is well spent.
Definitely. And Yukon does have this sort of trans, transfer database. So a student that is applying out to other colleges and universities can run Yukon's sort of like programming into this transfer database. And so before they even apply to other colleges, they can pretty much see pretty quickly whether or not their credits are likely to be accepted. And they can even contact the registrar prior to applying to see if those credits would be accepted.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Get out with us.
And I see Mike Whitney's hand up.
Thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to say I'm on the curriculum committee. I didn't weigh in on this and I'll abstain for voting on this because of uh, my, in my professional capacity, I overlap somewhat with the ECE program.
Any other questions or discussion?
Yeah, Jay, I have a question.
Go ahead, Beth.
Susan, how many of our students have actually come back to our district to teach?
I'd have to count them, but we have quite a number of Fitch Falcon grads that teach in our district. I could probably get that from HR for you. And they are always very proud to come here and teach in their schools.
My only concern is that that this is a high-level cat, class and that's okay. But I'd like us to really start talking about the honors level class again. And see about institute an honest level class, either English or some honest level class. I know Portia always comes and talks about it. Ian brought it up. Somebody talked to me about it over the weekend. And so, you know, we could keep adding these high honors level class, oh, excuse me. But, yeah, I like to see some other classes too.
So these unified classes are a great place for any of our students to participate. I mean, they're really very accessible. So we have a host of them and I think we're adding on another one. So.
You know, we, we're talking about this being relevant for somebody interested in education, and indeed it is. But if a student is interested in sociology, social work, psychology and many other disciplines, the value of this instruction is going to be very useful in his or her career.
And I just wanted to kind of express a, a blended opinion here where I can understand what you're saying there, Matthew. And yeah, like depending on what the study, the course of study is in college, this sort of class could apply to someone who's not even pursuing a teaching degree. However, I do share the concern as, as Portia has mentioned and Bev has reiterated here as well. You know, that, yeah, we do have, you know, I, I think there is interest in seeing honors level courses. So creating space for that, but also if we're gonna have ECE courses. A lot of, there's, I think there is value to be had in, in providing ECE courses that eliminate a lot of the prerequisites that, that students face going in. That can kind of like slow the first year down as they progress towards their degree. And that, I think would have a lot more universal appeal for students to engage, you know, to knock out like a comp one-on-one English composition or, you know, other gen eds or, you know, if they have you know, or making sure that they understand about foreign language requirements, to make sure that those are cleared out. Because I've, I've heard a lot about students getting tripped up again in college. They don't realize they didn't clear their foreign language requirement. You know, they gotta have at least three, three in the bag, you know, three years. And so, you know, ECE, I, I, I believe should be like a springboard that knocks out a lot of like the, the first year or two worth of courses that would apply to almost any degree. That's where I think it would be the best value. But I could, I could see why this is, this has has a certain amount of value. And I, I would also like to, I, I, I share Bev's interest in getting like a, a firm number on how many Fitch grad, Fitch graduates come back to teach in the district, just to kind of, you know, get a sense of how well we are, how well we're doing with growing our own.
I, I look forward to a vibrant conversation about reconsidering our position on honors classes. But I don't personally feel that this is a zero-sum game. That in endorsing this as a viable pro, program that's going to help some of our students is really, should really be put into a zero-sum game is, is somehow doing this would diminish the conversation about honors. I think they're complimentary. You can disagree, it's okay.
No, that's fair enough. And, and so overall, I mean, but yeah, as far as ECE goes, like, you know, looking at my broad-based more universally impactful.
Adrian?
Yeah.
You're out here, Jay.
Yeah, I, I support, support adding this class. So I think right now we have one ed class, Ed Rising one. And this is another one for that, for, for kids that want to be teachers. And regardless of whether they come back to Groton or not, we need to produce a lot of teachers in Connecticut. So having a little bit more to give them some idea. And this, this, taking a class like this might also help a student realize that they don't want to be a teacher. I, I mean, my own kid is taking Ed Rising one right now. And he's actually going into a classroom and, 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 you know, he's gonna do a lesson for, for classroom and stuff. So getting that kind of experience is great, regardless of whether you become a teacher or not. And just, in just giving kids options. And, and also I think we are lower than the surrounding town average on ECE and AP offerings, correct?
Really build it up. We got that grant, remember?
Yeah, but we're trying to place, make some catch-up to be similar to other districts. And this is another class that will get us towards that. I also would support talking about the addition of honors level classes or, because to me, it seems like we've got this class. We have another one that's on the horizon, Ed Rising two. And we're gonna continue having them. And then it seems like some things, I don't know. I mean, I assume classes just kind of disappear on the schedule. And I don't know that we hear about that all the time. So like, I think Latin is still part of the curriculum, right? But it was never It's, but it hasn't been offered in a couple of years. So I, I, I think that, you know, we can only offer so many classes. So it, it's fair to, to talk about that, to talk about what the options are. And, and we should also know, like, if we're making decisions to add classes, the administration it'd be nice to know if classes aren't gonna be offered, if there's low enrollment, if there's low interest. So that we can make these decisions in a in a, in a well-understood, well-informed manner. So I support this class though.
Growing a tree produces good fruit.
All right.
All right, any other discussion? All right, if not, we'll go ahead and vote. Uh, the motion on the floor is to approve the Yukon EPSY eleven hundred Introduction to Special Education Curriculum. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions?
I abstain.
Have abstain.
Hey, I need to change mine to abstain.
And Mike to abstain, yep. All right. Very good, thank you very much, and thank you, Amy, for staying on with us. Next, Ms. Holabekki is here, and again, thank you. I'm gonna be making a uh. Referral later tonight um to kind of flip the script on these meetings because it really is a a burden. For for the speakers to to have to wait four hours until their item comes up. But Adrian, would you like to read the motion for item number five?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to approve Fitch High School's travel club field trip request to Portugal and Spain scheduled. For July ninth, twenty twenty six through July twentieth, twenty twenty six.
Second Thomas, okay, and um Ms. Holabekki, would you like to present?
Um yeah, can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, you'll have to excuse my voice, I'm battling a bit of a cold. And it just seems to get worse at night, so. This is gonna be my fourth um trip proposal for you guys. We have one headed to Paris and Amsterdam and Brussels this summer. Which we have actually gotten a lot more diversity on, which I know has come up um in past discussions, so we're excited about that. Um we also had a really successful trip this past summer to. What ended up being five countries, cuz his kids were so well behaved, our tour director also brought us to France, so we traveled to. Germany, Austria, Italy, Switzerland, and we got to sneak in France there at the end. And then the kids were just so well behaved and. We got several compliments from a Swiss fondue evening that we did. They said that we were the best group that's ever come through. Um to participate, the kids had so much fun, they were making Swiss music and um. They were also like participating in the dress up stuff. I sent um Susan Austin some some pictures and stuff as well, so. Um if she wanted to share those with you guys, she could, but it was it was tons of fun, and so something I did this past year was I decided to. Ask the kids where they wanted to go next, and Portugal and Spain was what they voted for. So EF's great, um we've been working with them now for a while, and everything. For the trip besides just like spending money um and their passport cost is included in the cost of the trip. Um this trip is on the higher side, but it's just because I included, I wanted you guys to see like the max amount of. Uh excursions that the kids can do, they're stopping at quite a bit of places um. Which is kind of similar to our last trip, we did that and the kids kind of liked it because they got to see so much and experience so much different culture and. One of the things they said they liked the most was seeing how everything changed with landscape and. Community and just language as we went along. So I think this trip will have something similar with that. And um. But so there's a lot of different like excursion opportunities, so I wanted to show everybody the maximum. Usually what I do is. After I um when I present it to families, I let them know that, you know, this is um. This cost can depend on which excursions we decide to do, so. Um I just include it as a full price so that they can see, and then we can adjust from there. But also, the reason why I wanted to get on the agenda for tonight was because EF's offering a five hundred dollar discount for this trip. Which is really huge for a lot of our students, as well as I am planning more. Uh foreign events, as you can see, it's not until twenty twenty six. So that's um more students can have the opportunity to attend the trips, so it makes that monthly cost a little bit lower for them. There's a lot of high interest in this trip, so I'm anticipating. Um a lot of students, I'm actually anticipating it to be like our highest numbered trip so far. Um and then it's the, seems like the best opportunity for fundraising for students is. They get their own little fundraising portal um through EF where they get a hundred percent of the proceeds, so something that we're doing. Um starting hopefully the end of this week, but I might push it till next week cuz we have S A Ts and stuff. Um but every kid is going to be launching their personal um. Fundraising site through through EF, so that they can raise some money for their own like tips, passports, little excursions, things like that. Yeah, so I'll take any questions that you guys have. I kind of just went over a little bit quickly cuz I know I've been here a few times and you guys might be. Um well versed with it, but any areas of concern, I'm happy to answer.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there anyone that has any questions?
I do, Jay.
I think I heard Jen, then Bev, then Ian.
Very good, um so I knew I asked this last year, I just wanted to make sure, you know, um. So students who come from our lower income, you know, I think we're like, what, forty three percent? How do you see um the discourse um in of the students? So I see that you take. One chaperone is every six, two chaperones, so there's twelve students. Approximately. And then if there's more interest, I'm assuming we get more teachers, but what's the diversity of like the students who are able to participate?
Um so. So I think like in years past, like maybe our fir- well. Definitely our first trip, I'd say, like, well, the trip's open to anybody, but um. And I think something I'll start off with saying is that a lot of the travel club is like gotten to be pretty well known at Fitch, and. I've had a lot of families like reach out to me and ask me about future trips, so like there are families that, you know, may come from a lower income household who are. They wanna send their child on this opportunity, so they'll start planning ahead. And um you know, I usually give them like a rough estimate cost of how much like a trip would be, so they start saving. Ahead of time, and that has helped because our trip this year, I believe I have twenty one kids attending. And it's more diverse than our past trips, like I'd say, usually you'd see a trend of students that come from a higher. Household income attending the trips, but this this year um more students had been able to go. I think it was because we started a few months earlier. Um and there was also a four hundred dis- dollar discount attached to that as well. So I think we're making progress. I definitely think that there's more ways to include more students and. I believe Ian brought this up last time, but he said something about starting a um like a booster club. Or something for the travel club, but I wasn't really sure her to reach out to about that, so that's something that is still like on the cusp. Of um planning as we're, you know, developing and more kids want to attend the trips.
Yeah, no, thank you for doing this, right, like um. So I do, I'm a strong believer that like as you travel, you're learning too, you know what I mean? Especially where you're going in twenty twenty six with Portugal and um Spain, and then like the foreign language. So that they can apply whatever they're um, you know, learning i- in the school, so. And just being able to immerse themselves in um. For what, it's like a two week period, so yeah, no, thank you. I'm just always concerned. I never want it to be. Um just because of it's our school district and just to be like only like. Few students can attend. You know, making sure that there's ways that um less fortunate families can also attend. Whether it's going to locations that are um less expensive. Or trying to find ways to help those students earn. While, you know, either while they're at school or something.
Yeah, absolutely, I completely agree with you. Um I think the cost of travel has gone up a lot because I've just seen just. Gen- in general, like the price of trips, like when I'm, you know, going through the catalog and looking at different options. I'm quite surprised by the cost of some of them. Um so I think maybe just with the economy, but also um. I've been able to work with a couple students um who were having some financial difficulties, so. What they ended up doing was like if they could no longer attend the upcoming trip. We extended their time to pay so that they could attend the next one, and that worked out for three students that. Were supposed to attend the original London, Paris and Rome, and then we. Extended the time that they had to pay and we were able to transfer them to the next trip, so giving families some more time to pay also had helped, so. I'm willing to, you know, work with them, um and I talk to the parents on the phone and whatnot, so we can try to get this out to many kids as possible.
Thank you.
Thank you, um Bev, and then Ian.
Thank you, Jay. I I'd just like to ditto what um Jen has had to say. And I've been to both Portugal and Spain, and there's definitely a lot of history over there. Uh my question is. How is the free course to teachers and chaperones offset?
Oh, so like how mu- how much do like the chaperones pay?
Well, you have here course per teacher chaperone, and it says free. So they're all going free. How is that course offset? Are the students paying more so these people can go for free? Or there's EF um give you those trips for free? Uh that's my question. How is, how is that course offset?
Yeah, absolutely, that's a great question. So actually EF pays for. Um the chaperone, so it's kind of like an incentive for, cuz I had all these questions as well when I first started with um. Partnering with EF to do the travel club, cuz I was like, you know, I was like, that's kind of crazy that you can go for free. But they said um it's an incentive to get teachers to travel with their students. Um and just deliver the opportunities, so it really is for every six kids that sign up, you get a free chaperone spot. Or sometimes, you know, what happens is we have uh. Which could be an opportunity. Sometimes we have parents that sign up to go and they pay. Um and they're, they're like a built in chaperone, so sometimes like, like last year this came up, I didn't end up having to do it, but. Um I was gonna use one of the chaperone spots to. Perhaps pay for a kid to go on the trip or like help out, but it, we ended up not having to do that, but. I was discussing that with my tour consultant because we already had plenty adults. Because two, two parents decided to travel with us, and I still had those free spots. So I had asked my travel consultant if we could, you know, use those to help kids, and she had said that we could, but we ended up not needing to use it, so.
And then what happened to those two free spots that you had?
I ended up giving him to a different teacher in the school, like I ended up just reaching out and um asking for more teacher chaperones.
Right, thank you. I'm I'm sure the kids will enjoy Portugal and Spain, so thank you very much.
I hope so, thank you.
Thank you, Ian.
Uh thank you, um and Laura, I just wanted to thank you for um taking the initiative on all this and and continuing to build out the project and. Yeah, I do remember the conversation we had in the meeting uh previous. And I just made another note here to to look into. Yeah, I'll do some more research on my end, and I de- definitely like to to help out however I can. Uh to create a, to to create a travel booster club. To find ways to to broaden access um for lower income students. Um the fundraising you mentioned, uh is all individual driven, or are there group efforts at times? To fundraise, like once you get students signed on?
Yeah, um thank you for your help with the booster club and um. So usually with the, with the EF profile, um they are, that is like individual and they get a hundred percent of whatever they raise. So it's kind of similar to in the past, like our school used to do SNAP raise when we had a um, when we had the partnership with them. We no longer do, I think we use a different small company, but the guy's kind of hard to get in touch with. But what I found when I did SNAP raise, we did raise five thousand dollars, which was amazing. Um but one of the complications I had with that was. One student like uh like family members donated three thousand dollars on his behalf. And it was a group fundraiser, and you know, one of the problems that came up was, well, is that money just for him, or is it for everybody and? You know, me and Ted Keller at the time had to go through and backtrack and all that, so. When it comes to platforms like that, I think using the EF traveler page where it's individual is great. Um but of course, there's other small things that we do. Last year I did like a Charleston rep fundraiser that brought in a few hundred dollars. Of course, the student council uh. And stuff do a lot of uh fundraisers, so sometimes the things that we can do are limited for what's left, but. Yeah, we usually try to do a couple like smaller um fundraisers throughout the year.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
I'm in full support of this and uh I look forward to working with you in the future.
Yeah, sounds great, thank you.
I see Matthew has his hand raised.
Matthew.
Thank you very much. I'm glad to, well, I don't see you tonight, but I hear your voice. I will be voting for this, but I do have a couple of questions and maybe even a concern. Uh I see the sightseeing, the food, the hotels, and all of them would be a wonderful tourism experience. What I'm wondering about is what interaction will our students have with peers? People their own age in Spain and or Portugal.
Oh, yeah, I think that's a great question, so I think you asked something similar in the past and.
I do.
Yeah, um so I think what's really great is. Um a lot of time with the hotels that were placed in, other EF groups from all over the world are also placed there, so. While it might not be directly like interacted with, um I'd say like, you know, s- students from Spain. They might have students from Germany staying in the same hotel as them, so they get like that um interaction like we had. Uh when we were, when we were in Venice this past summer, we were with another EF tour all day that was from. France, I believe, and the kids interacted with them and stuff, so it was, it was kind of cool to see that aspect, um but in regards to like. You know, interacting with students from the country that they're going to, sometimes there's opportunities where they might like engage with. You know, um depending like where we're going or what type of activity we're doing. Um sometimes a lot of it is like surprise too. Like our, when I meet the tour consultant, like a few weeks before the trip. She tells me about additional things that we can add on for the kids that they're interested in, so if it's something that's more cultural. I'll like ask her to add that in. But they do, they do interact with. The c- community a lot. But I think the fact that they get to like interact with like other EF groups from all over the country when we're staying at the different hotels is like. It's a benefit, that might answer your question.
I think it's a wonderful program, it's a tourism program. Uh I have some concerns, the same concerns that those of you who've been around for the last couple of years have heard me saying. Program is frightfully expensive and have no illusion, there are no free tickets. The cost of the tickets are borne by the students. The students are given a price, and they pay the price, and tickets are given out for free, but there is no free lunch. Somebody pays for it, it's like a. Commission on a house, the buyer doesn't pay, but by God, the buyer pays. So the question is, can we provide an educational experience as well as a tourism experience? Can we provide an experience that will build global citizens, not just chatting with kids in, we might meet in a hotel. But in a structured school setting, and I am passionate about this because I organize. These trips for the National Federation that I worked for when I was teaching in France. We took one set of kids to to Normandy for the fiftieth and and fiftieth anniversary of the invasion. And they entertained our troops. We took other kids to Italy, to Spain, and to uh the United Kingdom. It was a fraction of the cost, even allowing for inflation, a fraction of the cost, less expensive and direct contact. With people who lived in these countries, that's where the extension, we had the visitor for a family. One little family came into the French class here, and the kids were just so excited to have a chance to use their language. This is a great opportunity for our kids, and I will vote for this because it's, it's certainly better than not doing the program. But where we can really help the kids is by turning this into a, into an educational program, and that means giving this. And that means giving Ms. Holbecky some real support, not leave it up to her all by herself to do this. Because she's getting good value in a commercial sense, but it's not good value for our kids in the financial sense. And it's educational value. We're really going to build global citizens. We can do better. We can do better. And I offered last year to help. I'm offering this year to help again. Let's vote for this. What I would like us to do if the board concurs is ask Ms. Holbecky to ask if the tour guide can arrange for at least one classroom visit where our kids can meet kids their age in a school and have a chance to spend an afternoon in the school. It may not be possible, but I would ask anyway. Thank you for your time. It's been my talking too long.
Okay, is there anybody else that has any questions or comment?
I do, Jay, if you don't mind.
Go ahead.
Uh, I just want to say too that I agree with everything Matthew just said. Uh, but I do have a question. It says earning credit for new experiences that students in grade six to twelve could earn a, a point five elective high school credit. Do any of our students ever earn that point five credit?
Um, oh. Um, so with the one in regard to the high school credit, we've never done because um, I was told in the past, I don't think this was by Matt Brown. I think this was maybe Ted Kelleher had said that that would have to be board approved. Um, like you guys have to approve that they could do the project for the credit. And then, but the other thing that they can opt into is there's like a course that they can pay, I think like a hundred and fifty dollars to do like a, a, like a, kind of like a service like project of like everything that they learned and submit it to uh, Southern New Hampshire University for college credit, but I
That's, that's three hundred and sixty dollars according to the paper. I don't mean to cut you off. I'm sorry.
That's okay. No, that's okay. So I think I was going off of like sometimes at the end of the trip, they offer discounts for kids to, to do that.
Maybe Susan, that's something we could talk about because maybe um, the kids can't earn that point five credit if they want to.
Yeah.
I would like to, uh, I'll make a referral that we invite Ms. Holbecky back after the budget is done and after that. You know, we can do that in, in May or June uh, to talk about how we can restructure a commercial enterprise into a less expensive but more fulfilling educational experience.
Yeah, because I was actually going to say too, nothing's free. Just like Matthew said, nothing's free. So we think those chaperones and teachers are going for free, but our students are paying for that.
Yeah, that makes sense.
I think Ian has something.
Ian?
Yeah, I just wanted to, uh, thank you, Matt, for bringing that up and, and, and bringing that into crystal clear reso- resolution. Um, I, I'm full support of your referral and I think that is actually probably could uh, accomplish two goals at once where we create more access and a better value in the grand scheme of things. And also like, yeah, the uh, credit, whatever credits. Uh, let's get that in front of the uh, curriculum committee and get it, get it passed through. There's um, that, that should not be, we should not be standing in the way of that credit. And uh, I was, I'm sorry to hear that that was the case, if that was the case in the past, if that was the case. Um, so yeah, let's, let's, let's look at uh, and, and I think actually like attaching it to what you're talking about global citizenship, Matthew, is, is possibly a way we can also open up some grant funding for this. And good, create, you just, you know, lessen the cost and, and increase.
If, if, if the board wants, I can get in touch with the Federation in Paris. They run the system international schools all across Europe and in South America and see if we can find a partner school. But that would mean our families accepting their kids for ten days in order for their families to accept our kids for ten days.
I think this is definitely worthy of a good discussion.
Yeah.
In the next meeting, yeah.
Okay, it's like, I mean, I'm just gonna throw a wrench like into this thing. So maybe it's like a different club, right? So maybe it's like a service travel club, like if we're gonna end up. Because I don't know what the charter of the travel club is. Maybe it's just to travel, to enjoy, to immerse. So before we, these are all wonderful ideas. I totally support them, but it may not be the travel club that we insert ourselves in. It might be like a service club. I don't, I don't know all of the clubs at Fitch. But if the students, um, you know, so they don't want to stay at somebody's house. They just want to go see a beautiful museum and stay at a hotel, right? You know, so let's um, not change the composition and, and, or we take a survey, right? Like I'm the one who was like, um, initially saying, you know, like making it cost effective, like getting the exposure and experience, but um, if the travel club, it may not be the travel club.
I'm, 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 I'm sort of with Jen on that one. I think in the same thing, exactly what is the travel clubs, you know, stated purpose? Uh, the group of people, a group of kids that would be interested in this trip may not be the same group of kids who'd be interested in something that Matt was proposing. There would be some overlap, of course, but yeah, right. Some kids may say, geez, this is my one only chance to go to Spain and finally see the Alhambra. Period end. Not that you couldn't do both on, on, you know, with Matt's suggestion. I had a little thing. I don't know when the Spanish school year runs, but they're going in July. Our kids aren't in school in July. Maybe the Spanish kids are not in school in July. So how are our kids gonna meet their kids if they're not in school? But I don't know whether a school runs.
Um, I don't know, I don't know Spain offhand. France, it ends about the twentieth of July. But it doesn't start, it doesn't start until mid October.
Maybe it's the same. Yeah, maybe it's the same. It's just something to consider, but anyway.
I'm in support of a future agenda. I'm going to discuss all those possibilities. But let's put on this one now.
I think Mrs. Holbecky is uh, gotta be to work in um, seven hours.
Yeah, a- a- as do a few of the rest of us. Um, is, are we ready to vote?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. All those in favor of the motion on the floor to uh, approve Fitch High School's travel club field trip request to Portugal and Spain scheduled for July ninth, twenty twenty six through July twentieth, twenty twenty six. Please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Abstentions? So that passes. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Laurel.
Hi guys, have a good night.
Thank you. All right. So now we're going to slide into committee reports. Matthew, po- policy.
Well, you know what we did last month because we looked at it and uh, we're meeting this month, I believe the nineteenth. And Susan's going to be occupied on the usual date and we're going to do wonderful things.
All right, sounds great. Andrea, curriculum.
All right, we uh, I just put my notes away. All right. So we looked at a unified music of the, the advising. A special education uh, of Help me out here. The, it was the
The curriculum we just voted on.
No, 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 that's a different one.
Oh, head rising. We also talked about head rising too.
That's the one. But I'm, I'm not recalling exactly what the conversation we had because it's blooming quarter of eleven. However, moving along. Uh, moving along, we talked about sports photography as well. And then um, and, and the one we did tonight, which was uh, the Yukon one, but the um, yeah, that's three. We approved the writing of the curriculum. However, we, we didn't bring it to the board for that. We just did the action. And then after the curriculum is written, we will come back to the, to the board during the year. And uh, uh, the teachers will present the curriculum itself.
Your vote.
For your vote. That's it. Good night. Hey Beverly, are you ready?
All right, so.
We're gonna do it together and let the Roberts rules police come and get us.
All right, so uh, Ian, ad hoc budget procedure committee.
We skipped finance facilities.
All right, you ready?
Did you guys meet?
What's that? No, we, we met.
Oh, okay.
We met October first.
All right.
Very, very short uh, uh, agenda. We had a director of finance report and director of buildings and grounds report. Uh, the, what you heard from uh, uh, from building and grounds, I'm not going to cover. You know, about the HVAC units and all that jazz. Uh, director of finance, I think it was our last meeting with, with Ray. He reviewed the proposed budget calendar. Let's see, uh, Jen talked about the ad hoc budget committee, uh, budget procedure committee. Talking about presenting his proposed budget calendar at an upcoming COW meeting. That's not tonight. Uh, you briefly touched on the differences between the two calendars. Uh, there was a review of the object code summary between outgoing and incoming uh, business managers and, and final expenditure report. Uh, and that's it. Now what, what um,
Oh my God, what's his name? Mr. Kilpatrick?
Sam. Thank you. I think he can for some reason. Uh, he was talking, he talked about the SCA contract. Um, said that the SCA is asking for their contract to be extended and he recommended approving their request. That's, that will be dealt with, I guess, upcoming. That's my report.
Didn't we vote on that?
Is in a committee.
Yeah, it's been done.
It's between October thirteen today. Never mind, strike a week.
We had a special committee, we had a special committee meeting, Dean, but I don't think you made it.
I did miss two of the eight.
Yeah, yeah. So we got, we actually got some work done in between. Uh, Ian.
Ad hoc budget procedure committee met on October tenth and approved the interim report, which was uh, presented to the committee of the whole. And uh, also uh, referred nine proposed policy revisions uh, to the policy committee for review. Um, and the policy committee met on that and after some discussion uh, as, as uh, chair of the budget proc- procedure committee, I withdrew the um, well, I withdrew them off, out of, out of consideration for the moment to be redrafted uh, to better incorporate CAPE recommended language uh, in all the corresponding policy numbers. Uh, which that work has been done. And uh, so the uh, nine policy uh, revisions as proposed by the ad hoc budget procedure committee will be uh, back up again on the policy committee um, at the next time we meet.
Hardly wait.
And we did, uh, in the policy committee, we did uh, part- uh, partition them as five with high priority and four with secondary priority and
Good job.
Yep. Ones that are more immediate to the budget procedure in the now and others in the four uh, related to budget oversight after a budget is passed.
Right. Thank you very much. And Beverly, learn.
No, the two of us are on.
No, she's gonna talk about Lauren.
Oh, God.
Yeah, we have a, we have a long ways to go, Andrea. We still have batteries and communications and
I think Anne was on the nine, but it's not.
Beverly uh, promised me the meeting would be done by ten. But anyway, go ahead.
I lied, I lied. Uh, learn met on uh, October tenth. We discussed the parent bill of rights for English learners and multilingual learners. We also talked about the new infant toddler program that learn is going to start. Um, hopefully at the end of January twenty twenty five or the beginning of February twenty twenty five. Um, I, I T per, I think it's a I T person. Someone at learn um, has developed an app for teacher evaluation. So when the principal or the, or whoever the supervisor is that's evaluating a teacher can go in the, go in the classroom and write all his notes and his, and his um, um, whatever, and, and his thoughts on the app and send it immediately to the teacher. And learn might make that app available to other school districts. Because this way teachers get an immediate um, feedback from the evaluator. And also Kate Erickson updated the board on the progress of the regional collaborative of districts to offer combined course program, programming to students in the region. And the program is two and a half years in the making and very close to um, being launched. And five courses are on the table and they're gonna narrow it down to three courses. And that's my report. Any questions? Okay, good.
All right. Thank you, Bev. Uh, Ian, anything from Athletic Fields?
Uh, they, they met on October seventeenth. I was unable to attend. Um, so I'm still collecting the notes on that and reviewing the recording. So I'll have to send that report out in the email out to, to the whole board.
Okay, thank you very much. And um, let's see, um, Matthew, anything from Trails?
Trails next meets in December. No report. Um, library director Jen Mealy uh, asked me to express her gratitude to Groton Public Schools. Charles Barnham invited Groton Public Library to its parent teacher conference with libraries setting up table for parents to sign up their children for library cards. Uh, the hope is that the other elementary schools in Groton Middle School will extend similar invitations through Susan and uh, Jen will just be with the angels.
Principal's notes.
Yeah. That's it.
All right, very good. So now we come to the highlight of our meeting, um, letters, communications and comments by board members. Uh, if you'll indulge me, I'd like to just speak first briefly. I'm about to travel and I may lose connection, in which case Bev will take over. Um, first of all, I attended the Martin Luther King Scholarship uh, dinner uh, as did a few of you. And I just want to say that um, uh, as usual, it was a very inspiring evening. And a- again, thanks to Dr. Ackerman for working with the scholars for many, many weeks prior to uh, uh, coach them on their speaking skills. And um, it was uh, a really great evening. Um, I am going to be proposing a um, referral that we flipped the script on our meetings. Um, became painfully clear tonight that by having people wait three or four hours, it just didn't seem fair. I think we should uh, reconfigure our meeting template to put the action items first. Um, people have asked me, why do you folks have to read your minutes in your meetings? They're all available on your website. Um, but then I realized not everybody looks at the website. Um, but um, so that's just something we've always done, but maybe we could do that later in the meeting as we did tonight. And thank you for Matthew for suggesting that. Um, other than that, um, I will now uh, turn to Andrea, and if you can go around the table, if I lose contact, Beverly will take over. Thank you.
Nothing. Is that what you meant?
Yep. Next.
Oh, suggested agenda.
No, we're not at that. We're, we're communications.
Oh, nothing.
Uh, I just want to say thank you to Dr. Ackerman. I counted, she was mentioned by three different speakers, a total of four or five different times for the work she's done with the youngsters, not only this year, but longstanding. You are deeply honored and appreciated.
Thank you very much.
That's it.
Um, I also attended the, the Martin Luther King uh, Awards Dinner and, and that was a great event. And uh, thank you, Dr. Ackerman, for all the efforts you've done. Uh, it's a huge and profound effect on the, the community. Um, I uh, we all received uh, uh, some communications from some uh, apparent in the community that raised a concern. They also came up earlier again tonight in another policy matter. I think um, as a policy committee, we should take a look, do a, a general scan over across all the policies. And um, looking for a particular situation where board and district maybe need to be defined better. Um, the email that I received uh, basically identified that, that, you know, actions are being taken and represented as if it was a board approved action. When in fact, it was a thing that the board was not in a position to consider. Um, or, you know, give one way or another direction on. Uh, so I think we, and then again, we came across that in a policy tonight where we realized, no, that's not actually a board action. It's administration action, district action. So I think we need to get It's administration action, district action, so I think we need to get, uh, some clarity and consistency on how those terms are used, uh, cuz I don't want to, um, have to defend an action that I had no say in, activated.
Um, let's, let's, uh, send me an email, we'll put it on the agenda, my concern is, uh, how do we do this short of, uh, Andrea's writing a new app for us?
I don't know.
Functional, the functionality of that is, is the challenge, but the, the concept is great.
Right, so yeah, so I'm putting it out there as a marker, and as a communication to the community at, at large, that, you know, there is an ambiguity there. Um, there are ambiguities, thank you, it is getting late. Um, also, along those lines, uh, I did make a referral for, uh, policy thirteen twelve and thirteen twelve point four, uh, to look at, um, how anonymous complaints, anonymous complaints are handled. And also, related to that, how are they cleared out and then reported back to the board once they are handled? Because then, again, there's ambiguity there, and, um, another referral that I had talked about bringing forth, um, I'd like to have an agenda item, uh, or, or at least get, you know, to the committee of the whole, um, to discuss, uh, possibilities of how to look at our contract with a pair of professionals.
Thank you, one right in the head. I'm not in the agenda items yet.
Got you, well, solid communications. Um, yeah, that's, that's where I'm, that's, that's what I'm looking to, uh, bring forward.
Yeah, if, thank you, if I could just say one quick word, when I was on policy, we were very, very clear about, when we talked about the board, it was only actions, when we use the word board, it was only actions that the board could accomplish. When we use the word district, that meant that it was the entire school system headed by Susan. So I don't, I don't know how we clarified that, maybe it was just in our minds, but that's all I wanted.
You could have something on the front page.
Right, well, the problem is, how's that carried out in the community, because, you know, and how we make sure we're, that's being communicated. That's it for me.
Not yet, okay, Dean, it's your turn, Dean.
I gotta rock. On Halloween, no, I'm gonna spear you all, I'll pass.
Okay, Adrian?
Alright, um, after, um, last week, I think we brought up high, uh, teacher conferences at the high school, I had communication with a couple of parents who also noticed the same thing. Well, no, that there were no teacher conferences this year, no, no, notes, though, no one was notified, um, and then, um, someone actually went back through a bunch of parent squares to see if there's any notification, but it seems like, um, like teacher conferences at the high school level, at least there hasn't been any discussion of them yet this year, I don't know what the plan is, but it would be great, and if, I don't know if that's a board thing, like if we're gonna eliminate that, um, if that would happen at the board level or not, but, um, I'm sure that there's, there are some parents that probably still want it.
I have heard there's inconsistencies over the years, but I'm gonna talk to Matt about that to see that we can get that more consistent.
I think but through my wife, um, there has been the last five years until this year. You, you would have to sign up for it, um, they would say if you want conferences, sign up for it at such and such a time. What's that?
That's not happening?
Not this year, not that, not to my knowledge, so I might have, I might have missed something.
Hmm.
Um, but we, the teacher conferences are right now for the rest of the district, um, which also gets you into the calendar. Um, and if we're having teacher conferences for some schools, but not all of them, should it be a school day, half day on the calendar? I think, um, Bitch didn't have half days either for the conferences. So, which, yeah, I mean, it, it, there's probably limited demand for, um, for those spots in the evenings. Um, they could probably get through them all, um, so, yeah, and, um, so that'll be one thing I'd love to hear, you know, if there's gonna be a change in the, um, so, thank you.
Susan, can you, Susan, can you answer that in board notes?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Dean, you have something to say now?
I had a question about for Jay.
Oh, Ian, I'm sorry, Ian.
Uh, the, uh, second union grievance, when are we going to meet and deliberate on that and, and close that process out?
So I sent an email to Floyd over the weekend, and I'm still waiting to hear back.
Okay, and my referral to, uh, put a con, put like, so some discussion about seeing the willingness of the board to look at the contract and try to address some of the ambiguities that came to light due to those hearings, um, is that going to happen anytime soon?
That is something I'd really have to discuss with Floyd. Whenever you're talking about, um, a contract that's already been ratified, so I'd have to discuss that with him.
Okay, and I know, I know that Matthew has some interest in some other items, along that line too. Um, so yeah, I would look forward to hearing those communications, um, as soon as they're, as soon as it can happen.
Are we open for referrals?
Has everyone had a chance to speak?
Beverly and Mike, I guess, I'm sorry.
Oh, I've already talked about the E V, um, stations, when, when Sam was speaking before, when he was giving his report, and that's, uh, my other communication with Susan, I don't know if Jay mentioned this to you, but at Thames River Magen School, on one side of the sign, it says no classes on October fourteenth. Now that's long past, so I don't know if it still says that, I mentioned it to Jay to tell you, but, um, you could have them check it out.
Uh, Mike, do you have anything?
Nope, just looking forward to, uh, Andrea's contribution to the meeting at the end of it.
Yeah. Future agenda items.
Hey Beverly, you ready?
No, 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 not yet, I think some people have a future agenda items, don't they?
I thought I heard Mike say.
I, I have a couple.
Go ahead.
I could go first, okay, um, Susan, I read in your, um, in your board notes, that Anne Marie had a meeting with the assistant principals to talk about absenteeism and how to use research-based practices to improve student attendance, can she talk to the board about that?
Absolutely.
Okay, and the other thing is, um, um, you could do this in board notes, how much is the new legislation regarding minstrel products going to cost the school?
So, our Title One schools are able to get access supplies for free of charge. We've already allocated three thousand dollars to get the project started, so that only leaves two, well, two elementary schools and Fitch, but Fitch may be, um, able to also access, so I've gotta just find out from the State Department how we go about doing that.
Okay.
So that should save us some money.
Yeah, that will, thank you.
Provided materials through the nurse's office, so this is just giving us better access for our kids. What they need.
Okay, alright, your turn, Matthew.
Uh, I'd like to make a board, um, an item for the next board meeting to see if we can discuss a motion regarding the charging stations to disconnect the public charging stations until we find a fiscally and technically viable solution, and put that on the agenda for our next regular or special board meeting. For COWs, uh, the state representatives have told us for the last couple of years that we give them our priorities for the coming legislative session, too late for them to do much about it. So, uh, I'd like us all to think about what we think is important for our legislators to consider, and invite them, no, I, I would like to invite them in November if we could, so they would have a chance to write some legislation if they felt it was worthwhile. Um, immediately of immediate concern is this business of this ever-source, uh, uh, solar recapture funds and the ever-source, uh, COVID thing, so at, at least that's one item, but I'm sure there are more. Finally, uh, we know about the problem of space in some of the schools, yet here at Central Office, we have five temp, four or five temporary classrooms out back that I know are filled to the gills with stuff, this S T double F, lots of stuff, but can we consider the possibility of either having a yard sale or carting it to the dump so we can use these buildings for the purpose for which they were constructed, and take some of the pressure off the school? So I'd like that to be a COW discussion. Or maybe the superintendent can think about it and bring her ideas to the COW discussion. That's it for me, thank you.
Uh, what about you, Jen?
I was just gonna, um, if it's not already there, it's getting late and my brain's like, um, um, oh, it's coming from our citizens, um, um, five-minute, um, session there early on, um, we should put in the review of our curriculum for, um, honors classes, if it's not already there.
I, I think, isn't that already on the referral list? I, I thought it was, but we could check.
If it has, cuz I'm, she's mentioned it like three times now, or maybe more like in our meetings, so, let's, um, let's put it there and then maybe move it up, cuz that is important, right?
Yeah.
Students.
You all set, Jen?
I'm all set.
Okay, Dr. Ackerman?
I'd like to offer one quick thing, it's just a little bit of discussion on the, uh, on how items are removed from the referral tracking sheet, but sheet, how they're memorialized on that, on that sheet, so, but I'll leave it at that.
Okay. I, I did discuss that with Joyce, actually, so we're going to be doing it the way we discussed at the last meeting.
That kinda ties into something else I was discussing at, at the last COW was, um, that like, there, there is something, that there's an agenda, a far-future-looking agenda, as far as, um, like, things that I mean, how are the agendas determined? Uh, and how far in advance are they determined? I guess that, that would be an agenda item, I wanna just get a sense of like, you know, cuz I, we all get the agendas on Fridays, but, you know, how are we game-planning out the referral list?
Well, I, I think Jay meets with Susan on a Wednesday afternoon or morning, and between him and Susan together, come up with the agenda, based on the referral list, and based on what Susan wants to bring forward for the board to discuss. And that's, that's how they gen, the, the chair is really i- in charge of the agenda, with input from the board and the superintendent. So, it's, it's a, it's a community agenda, and that's why we had the referral list.
An agenda item is just a, a quick review of that and, and maybe, uh, you know, get a little more systemic with it, so we can kinda clear out some of the older stuff and, and get moving.
That's why we actually, Dr. G had created that month-to-month chart, C O W one, C O W two, and then the meetings whenever data is coming through, so we actually have a timeframe that we're getting all this information to you when it's new and not waiting, so that's why that came to be, because through the referral, these things were being asked for, and they came in a timely fashion, so we kinda made that calendar so that it showed when those things were coming.
Be nice to have access to that for all of us.
Well, you have it, it's, um, it's been given out, I think we can, you, you got it in your packet when you first had it, but I can send it out again.
Alright, yeah.
Yeah, it's just a calendar of events, um, and then we keep the tracker sheet updated as well, um, and that's sent out, should be sent out periodically, the tracker sheets.
Yeah, the tracker sheets are included in, in every few agenda packages, but maybe the calendar, like, you know, wherever the tracker sheet goes up, put the calendar in there.
Yeah, we can do that, and sometimes it shifts depending on when we get the information and other things come up, you know, so you kinda prioritize, but it helps keep it straight.
Okay, uh, I make a motion to adjourn. Oh, I'm, oh, I'm sorry, Andrew.
I'm gonna get you. I'm gonna tell you too, that the big hand is on the ten, and the little hand is on the eleven. I'm gonna get you.
Alright, did we say all those in favor? Have a good night, everyone.